Call to order the November 10th, coming council meeting at 7:01. First up is the call to order. I'm sorry, the pledge of allegiance is next. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
Alder Aratafrata?
Here.
Alder Clowder?
Here.
Alder Gerhardt? Muted.
Here.
Alder Crowley?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Schroeder?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, great. Next up is consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to move.
I heard Randy is our second.
I go.
Seconded by Julia. Anything that anyone wants to pull out before we approve the whole thing as a group? Seeing nothing. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, then that is approved. Next up, we're gonna skip to new business today. And a final update on the 2020 elections. Tracy, we had a lot of turnout, I know.
Yeah, I get to go first. So I'll try to make this quick. I have a lot of thank yous. I wanted to start off by thanking everyone that helped make the 2020 election year safe and successful one. I don't think that there was one city department that did not help out in one way or another. I want to give a special thank you to Lisa Sanford and our FACT TV staff for getting out info on our social media platforms. Our maintenance staff for delivering and returning all of our election supplies to and from the polling locations. Kristy Gavigan, our crossing guard for the numerous hours she's spent in helping us keep organized with all the outgoing incoming absentee ballot requests. Joyce Frye and Amy Tracy for helping out with in-person absentee voting and backing us up on numerous calls and questions from residents. I want to thank all you alders that helped out and offered help in any way that was needed. I want to thank the election inspectors that helped with in-person absentee voting as well as working the polls on the day of the election. Everyone that reached out to offer their services on Election Day, I want to thank you as well. The response of the Pittsburgh community to help was overwhelming and appreciated more than you know. I would especially like to thank all the chief election inspectors that helped out throughout this year with the increase in absentee ballot requests as well as putting in an 18-hour-plus day on Election Day and making sure the day ran smoothly. Most of all, I'd like to thank the clerk staff. These ladies worked tireless hours, nights and weekends, making sure Pittsburgh residents were able to have a safe election year. This was such an amazing collaborative effort by so many people on so many levels, and my sincere thanks goes out to all, so thank you. Information on the presidential election itself. We had a very successful November election. We had an 86% turnout for the city. That's an 11% increase from the 2016 presidential election. All of our polling locations had a line when the polls opened. That line was gone within an hour to an hour and a half of the polls opening. Only one location had a line reform around 3:00 in the afternoon due to the amount of Election Day registrations. That line was gone by 7:30 PM. All of our polling locations processed their absentee ballots prior to the close of the polls, which was an all-day, non-stop streamlined process. We had six provisionals on the day. Three came back and provided the proper documentation. Can you see? Only five came back in the mail after the deadline. There is a possibility of a recount. Per state statutes, the state has until November 17th to finish their canvas. The petitioner would need to file no later than 5:00 PM on November 18th and prepay if it is between a .25 and 1% margin. Anything under 2.5%, the taxpayers pay for. This is a Wisconsin state law. As of November 6th, the percentage was at .62%. So he is within that margin of having to pay himself. As a frame of reference, the last time we had a statewide recount in Wisconsin was only four short years ago, and the cost was approximately $3.5 million. If paperwork is filed, the state will send out a notice to the counties, to the 72 counties, who will then filter that notice down to the 1,851 municipalities in Wisconsin as soon as possible. We would then have three days to gather our information, likely putting the timeframe to begin around November 23rd through the holiday, as we will only have 13 days to complete the recount. These ballots are hand-counted during the recount. When it comes time for our municipality's ballots to be counted, the chiefs must be available to answer any questions, so they would need to be there in person. Information on polling locations. I wanted to give a big thank you to Little Johns and wish them nothing but success in their new venture here in Pittsburgh. Election Day went well. We had just been exception of a few concerns brought on regarding some signage having our city logo as well as advertisement for our business. There was some information, the Wednesday prior to the election, we tested out some equipment and were made aware of some storm damage to the building. It was communicated it would be taken care of Friday through Election Day as well as tripping hazard issues. The day before the elections, the issues had not been changed since the Wednesday prior. On Election Day, there were minor modifications to these issues, and we had a few comments regarding them. With respect to Little Johns, I will not make public what they were. However, if you would like to reach out to me individually, I can provide you with that information. Again, I want to wish them nothing but success and thank them again for all their help and hospitality with this election. That being said, there will be a major remodel taking place at this location to accommodate the services they are looking to provide to the community, which will affect the possibility of this being a permanent location for future elections. We have recently heard back from the county, and they are extremely excited about the possibility of the old fire station on King James Way being a polling location for Pittsburgh in that district. I've heard information that the Dane County Executive, Joe Parisi, has expressed possibly wanting to do a press conference if this does come to fruition. I urge you to consider this as a permanent location as we move into the 2021-2022 elections. And that being said, moving into the 2021 elections, February 16th is our spring primary, if there is one, and April 6th is the spring election. Candidates can begin circulating nomination papers December 1st, and I am working on updating forums and should have them completed by next week. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Tracy, for all the many, 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 many hours that you put into the election, as well as your staff, Yessenia, Ruth, Jamie, and then all the different various other people on staff and election workers and all that. Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any questions, so we can keep moving along. We have a direct referral. Does someone on finance want to make the motion?
I move approval of resolution R-197-20 Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA, Leave Carryover Memorandum for Understanding with the FPPA.
Second?
Seconded by Randy. Did finance approve?
Yeah, we approved it. Is the chief here?
Chief Brecklin is here, yes. Go ahead, chief.
Yeah, so can you explain this, chief?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. This is a memorandum of understanding with the Pittsburgh Professional Police Association and the city. The language in this MOU that you have in front of you is the same language that the city, through its personnel committee, approved back in September for non-represented employees. Creates a policy within the city that allows for leave carryover for an approved FMLA event. And in order to extend the same policy to the members of the police association, an MOU is necessary to do that. So that's what you have in front of you. If you have any questions related to it, by all means, feel free.
I'll just add that we are also working on the memorandum with our fire department as well, so that is coming. I think the idea that originated with a member of the police department who wants, is looking for this, and she is pregnant and wants to use it, which is why we didn't hold this one back to approve the same time that we do with the firefighters' union. She just wants to make sure that those, the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, to give her a little bit of peace of mind. But we are bringing this forward for the fire department as well. Any questions? All right, seeing none. All in favor of approving, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. All right, going on next is the administrator's report. Pat?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Several items tonight, most of them brief. The first of which is Quick Trip, which is proposed for the corner of East Cheryl and Sine. Will have their neighborhood meeting on November 18th. Due to the COVID situation, they're gonna have several different presentations of the project, every half hour beginning at 5:00 and extending through 7:00 PM. So it's 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, 6:30, and 7:00, and that's at the Reba Apartments Community Room. Secondly, the Holiday Light Tour will be Saturday, December 19th. Any residents or business that wants to be a part of the Holiday Light Tour should contact City Hall, and we'll get them put on the map that people follow so they can drive around and see the various holiday lights around the community. Lastly is, I hope, and Bill promised me, this is gonna be our final road construction update of the year. I'll start on Fish Atrey Road. Greenway Cross pavement is complete, and pavement marking will be completed on Wednesday. The west leg of Greenway Cross will be open to traffic by 5:00 AM Thursday morning. Pavement marking and decorative concrete work are being completed along with some landscape restoration. Most of the traffic control will be removed from the job beginning Monday, November 16th, that being the orange cones and barriers. And it'll be fully open to traffic by Friday, November 20th, so that's a week from Friday. Construction will resume in early spring with the southern section of Fish Atrey Road, and signal installation and lighting will also occur at that time. On McKee Road, E Road scheduled to be completed this Friday, November 13th. There'll be some final pavement marking, green epoxy, that will be done in the spring when warmer weather arrives. So it looks like we're nearing the end of one season prior to entering into the winter season, so I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Thank you, mayor.
All right. Moving on to commission and committee reports. Board of Public Works, Sarah.
Sorry, yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R-17720, set the solid waste collection rates. Second?
Seconded by Shannon. Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did finance approve?
Yeah, yes.
All right, did RCC?
Yes.
All right, do you want to speak to this, Sarah?
Sure. So this is the level of service proposed for 2021. It's the same that's being picked up from 2020 that had the weekly garbage collections, the bi-weekly, every other week collections for recycling, including the unlimited recycling for yard waste, 14 brush collections. The rates are being increased slightly from 203 per household to 209 per household. And then for apartments and condominiums, rates are being increased from 625 to 640. And this is resulting in a fund balance decrease of approximately $45,900.
All right, are there any questions at all? Seeing no questions. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that one's approved. Next one?
Make a motion to approve resolution R-19120, authorizing acceptance of contract with Purple Cow Organics for brush and yard waste processing services for 2021 to 2023.
Second?
Seconded by Julia. Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
Okay, and did finance approve?
Yes.
All right, what's this one, Sarah?
The city has worked with Purple Cow Organics since 2012 to dispose of the brush and yard waste that they pick up. So 100% of the city's brush and yard waste is put into the compost, complying with local and state regulations. Bill had said that they're the only known local option for this service, and so it was just kind of picking up what we had been doing and continuing that service for the 2021 to 2023.
All right, any questions at all? I don't see any, so all in favor of approving, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. Anything else, Sarah?
No.
All right. Does anyone have anything for a committee report that they can't wait a couple of weeks for? Sarah?
For public health and safety, I was just going to say that we did have Thad Schumacher from Pittsburgh Pharmacy come in tonight, and we did approve COVID testing on Cahill Main. So that is something that they will be offering, and just as an FYI, I know that there'll be some signs posted from Public Works, and that, just something that will be happening that I know they want to get it up and moving.
Yeah, so temporarily, people won't be able to park on Cahill so that people can use it for shots?
Yep.
Okay, great. Anything else? All right, I don't see anything else for now. Going on to finance. Julia?
Yes, in finance committee, we review the detail of all check issue check number 121339-121371 dated October 16th to October 31st, 2020, totaling $1,804,347 with 0.05. We also review the detail of all ACH payment dated in October 2020, totaling $165,111 with 17 cents. And next, I need a motion to approve resolution R-178-20, authorization to approve three-year contract with ESO Solutions.
Is that a second, Randy?
Second?
Seconded by Randy. What is this, Julia?
Is the chief?
Chief again?
Joe is here?
He is.
Okay. He can explain better than me.
All right, good evening. What you have before you is the records management system that the fire department uses for a couple of different things. Not only is it our incident reporting software. It allows us to keep track of fire inspections. It allows us to keep track of training. The existing software package that we have within the fire department right now, a notice was given that they are going to stop support for that software in the next year. So we are trying to make arrangements to be able to address the fact that we don't necessarily want to be in a vulnerable situation with our record management system. So we're trying to get in front of it, trying to make sure that we have that addressed by 2021, which means that we would have to train on the software and have it in place over the next couple of months.
All right. Are there questions at all? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay.
Aye.
All right, that approves unanimously. Thank you, chief. All right, anything else, Julia, for finance?
No.
All right. We're down to public appearances on non-agenda items. We're not gonna start the public hearing for about 10 minutes. Scott, is there anyone here for a public appearance on a non-agenda item that's not the budget?
I do not believe so, but I cannot be certain.
All right, so we have that. I think I'll just have one other non-agenda item for the public, and I know members of the council, a few of you know this, but I just wanted to let the public know that there's an incident recently that you may have heard about in the public, and I just wanted to let the public know and the alders that there is an HR investigation into that. And so that is something that is coming forward, and we're having, we'll have those results probably in December, it looks like. But I wanted to just let the public know that as well, so. Joe, do you have another non-agenda item?
So from a non-agenda item situation, I want to let you know that from emergency management in the city of Pittsburgh, we are actively monitoring what's going on, not only from the state, federal guidance. I think one of the things that needs to be shared from a city emergency management standpoint is the fact that we very much endorse the use of masks and distancing. We acknowledge the fact that the city is doing what they need to do as far as controlling access to certain buildings. I can also tell you that from an emergency management standpoint, we try to work with economic development so that we're not placing undue burden on anybody where we don't need to. So all of these things are being addressed sort of in the background. We are fully aware of the fact that this situation is not fair by any stretch of the imagination, but the fact that we are trying to reduce the risk associated with spread, make sure that we are in constant communication with department heads, and sharing anything that is being expressed as far as concerns from the city and its citizens. So anybody that does have concerns about what we're doing locally and the things that we're trying to do to prevent spread, I welcome those comments, and my contact information is available through the city's website. But I figured since we're filling time here, now would be a great time to be able to get that out there and make sure people are aware of the fact that even on the local level, we are doing what we need to, or trying to do what we need to do in order to not only address the expense associated with a pandemic, but also limit the spread. So thank you for your cooperation in that situation, and anybody that has concerns about it should reach out.
Thank you. All right, we've got six minutes before we're gonna start the public hearing. Pat, do I need a motion for recess for six minutes, or can I just call a recess for six minutes?
Do one additional report, mayor?
Yes, please.
Just briefly, in regards to the COVID test site at the Alliance Energy Center, I did have symptoms today, and I went in to get checked, and there are a large number of people that are utilizing that facility currently, I think due to the recent spike. I was in line for two and a half hours. So anybody that plans on utilizing a testing facility should plan on giving themselves plenty of time, because it's hard to get out of there once you're in there.
All right, good. Then if someone wants to do a motion to recess for five minutes?
Can I add?
Yeah, Dorothy, go ahead.
On to Pat's note?
Sure.
That you can make an appointment with Pittsburgh Family Pharmacy and go at your appointed time and be done in five, 10 minutes.
Yep.
Great.
I move to recess for five minutes?
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joe, on favor of recessing for five minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, we'll be back in five minutes. Alders, the public has three minutes to speak on whatever they would like to speak about, and I will be timing that. And then for alders, once we get into the next pieces and discussion of the individual amendments, just make sure that you wait until I call on you, because we do have some rules that we'll be going over. Don't interrupt others, and I'll do my best to get to everyone. Zoom is a challenge, as you know, but I will do my best. And with that, I can start the public hearing. I do have one person here in council chambers, and so I will let him go first. Mr. Tony Hartman, you are up first. Oh, hold on. Turn his mic on. All right, you already lost a minute.
I know, I lost a minute already. Hey, so Tony Hartman, live at 5680 Wayland Road, former alder, and just came to speak on a number, or support a number of amendments, but right out of the gate, I'm gonna limit myself to really speaking about number 10, but number three, I want to weigh in as in support of the lieutenant's promotion in the fire department. But number 10, for those of you who don't know, was put forward, I'm sure, at least by one of the alders tonight, and maybe more. I know for certain that Gabrielle Gerhardt was behind it, and I applaud her for that because I think the city took a pledge when I was on the council with Tom and Aaron just, you know, 18 months ago to convert to electric. This is a fairly straightforward one, involves $20,000, which I understand in a very responsible way is gonna be subtracted over here and used over there because we're up against, as we always are, levy limits and expenditure restraints. So applaud alders for all the time they spend trying to find the ways to do this. But this particular amendment will get us moving forward towards electric vehicles. I was just having a conversation with Chief Joe and didn't realize that even fire equipment now is looking more promising in the near future. But this is to put money towards hybrids and electric vehicles, and as most people know, this involves batteries and regenerative braking. With all the vehicles that the city owns, specifically the police department use a lot of fuel. They spend a lot of time actually idling, so this will be an awesome step in the right direction. And I just want to say that I hope everybody will give this one a thumbs up because, you know, we're headed that way, electric vehicles for a lot of our daily use. There'll be pickup trucks, just about every major manufacturer by the end of next year available. And I can tell you from having driven electric now for three and a half years, it's pretty darn nice. It isn't all that expensive if you start with your Chevys and your Fords. Can work your way up to Teslas, but I think we have a lot of opportunities with all of our vehicles, and I hope everybody will vote yes for this one. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you. All right, so we will go online. Scott, who's first and who's on deck?
Jimmy Barrow and Paul Feber will be after him.
All right, go ahead, Jimmy.
Great, thank you very much. So shout out to Joe. Thank you for your emails keeping us citizens in the loop on things happening. My interest peaked when I saw that there is an idea to put a teen center in the Jamestown neighborhood. I'm a youth pastor at one of the churches here in town, and I wanted to be clear, I'm not here on behalf of that institution, not putting our church's weight behind this at all. I'm just someone who cares deeply about teenagers and would love to see a place in our community where teenagers can connect with each other and build relationships, especially build relationships with people who are different from them. I think that there is, you know, we live in a city where people care a lot about issues, and we know a lot about the political issues. But I think that there's a big gap between caring about those issues and caring about the people affected by those issues. And so when I think of a teen center, I think of a place where teens from different kinds of backgrounds can come together and build community and relationship with one another. I think of building bridges across the things that divide us, and I think of, you know, just a safe place to grow. And so, yeah, I'm just very excited about that possibility and want to advocate to move toward that in the future.
All right, thank you. Scott?
Paul Feber. You are muted, Paul.
Can you hear me now?
You bet.
Thank you. Thanks for the chance to speak on the budget. I'd like to address item number 10 related to restoration of a hybrid and electric vehicle fund. My remarks will be fairly brief, but initially, I'd like to say that the transportation-related carbon disaster we're facing doesn't appear to be something we can simply electrify our way out of. A University of Toronto study found that A University of Toronto study found that by 2050, which is 30 short years from now, some 90% of gas-powered cars will likely need to be replaced with zero emission vehicles if we want a planet we can survive on. So that's a really short timeframe, probably impossible to achieve. So what seems necessary is that we consider more impactful strategies for shifting people away from so much private vehicle ownership and toward mass and active transportation and fundamentally reimagining our city to make it more car-free or car-light for more people. But nonetheless, I urge that you restore this fund of up to $20,000 so Pittsburgh can continue to move in the right direction of reducing carbon emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, who's next?
Ron French.
All right, go ahead, Ron.
You're muted and your video is off, Ron.
There we go. Honorable Mayor, Alder persons and city officials, my name is Ron French and I'm a citizen of Pittsburgh and currently reside with my wife in Wildwood South neighborhood. I'm here tonight to speak in support of budget operating amendment number 12, Swan Creek Monitoring Station Installation and First Year Monitoring. I'm owner of a veteran-owned small business based here in Pittsburgh. I serve on the city's Resource Conservation Commission and also serve as a board member of the Lake Wabesa Conservation Association. As an aquatic scientist, I have over 30 years' experience in monitoring rivers, streams and lakes throughout North America. In the last three years, I've also served as a stream volunteer for the Rock River Coalition monitoring water quality at Swan Creek at Layla Road. As you know, Swan Creek originates in the city of Pittsburgh and flows to the Wabesa Wetlands and into Lake Wabesa. And according to Wisconsin DNR, the Wabesa Wetlands are one of the highest quality and most diverse wetlands remaining in southern Wisconsin. As development occurs within the watershed of the Wabesa Wetlands, there is potential for negative environmental impacts that may threaten the quality of these wetlands. Currently, the city of Pittsburgh has approved several large developments in the Swan Creek watershed. Stormwater runoff in these neighborhoods, which if not properly controlled, could increase nutrients, chloride and total suspended solid loading to the wetlands and Lake Wabesa. Pluton loadings from uncontrolled stormwater runoff could contribute to the proliferation of invasive species, reduction in native plant species and the decline of suitable habitat for various wildlife and aquatic species in the wetlands. As areas, more areas are developed and land use patterns change within the Wabesa Wetlands watershed, it's important that we monitor our rivers and streams to determine the effectiveness of stormwater control measures. One way to do this is to identify the appropriate water body that potentially could be impacting a specific resource. For us, it's Swan Creek flowing into the Wabesa Wetlands. An environmental study conducted by UW in 2018 demonstrated there is a potential for land use changes occurring in the Swan Creek watershed to impact the Wabesa Wetlands. To monitor these impacts, the UW researchers recommended placing a long-term monitoring station on Swan Creek at Layla Road that will measure flow and specific water quality parameters. Long-term data collection using consistent and comparable methodology is critical to identifying trends or patterns so that we may determine if things are getting better or worse and whether or not stormwater control measures we have in place are working. To identify real trends from short-term aberrations, we need consistent and systematic information over a long time period. The collection of continuous stream flow and water quality data from Swan Creek Station will be used to calculate annual loadings to the Wabesa Wetlands and Lake Wabesa, develop a baseline dataset that can be used for trend analysis and potentially identify potential stormwater control measures that may reduce pluton loadings.
Ron, you're at your three minutes.
Finally, the budgetary investments.
Ron, I'm sorry, but you're at your three minutes. I have to cut people off at three minutes. Thank you, Ron. Who's next, Scott?
Pranisha Clifton.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Pranisha Clifton and I am the Director of Youth Protection and Compliance for the University of Wisconsin System. But I am here speaking today as a youth protection expert in regards to amendments three through eight. A lot of our youth will be coming out of this pandemic and post-COVID closures, needing a place to call home, needing a place to feel warm and welcome. And we do know that every child has not been safer at home. By supporting this amendment, we can support children and give them a home away from home and we can give them a way to grow socially and emotionally. Our schools are only limited to what they can do in an eight-hour day by giving them the basics, reading, math. And we need so much more than that. We need that emotional support for our children. Our children are coming out of isolation. Our children are coming out of fear and anxiety. And the way we can support them is through programs at this teen center and to give them a place where they can see other youth after being isolated for so long and also giving them a space where they can dream to their full capacity. Now, I know that there are other things that we can spend money on, but I always say that there is no greater investment than the investment in our future. These youth will grow up to be future community members. These youth will remember the investments that they made, that you made in them as they consider the investments they make for you in your future. And I just want to get us in this habit of as we rise up and we do all these amazing things and we come out of COVID-19 closures, that we remember that the children are still going to need a place and a time to recover. So I hope that you will support amendments three through eight. And I look forward to being able to support you and helping these children then go on to University of Wisconsin programs or even bringing the University of Wisconsin programs into your sights. Because I believe that our children need this and I believe that your whole community will benefit when you're children. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Who's next, Scott?
Judith Stadler.
All right, Judith.
Thank you, Mayor Richardson and Common Council members. My name is Judy Stadler and I live at 5629 Newton Street. I'm here to speak in support of Alder Gerhart's Amendment Number 10 to reinstate $20,000 in the budget for a hybrid and electric vehicle fund. I was very pleased that members of the Common Council in February 2019 passed the Pittsburgh Clean Energy Resolution. That was definitely a step in the right direction, declaring that the city acknowledges that clean energy is the future. I know the resolution is not binding, but it does give a very real signal about where city leaders wish to go. Since then, the city has moved further to implement some clean energy commitments. One big step was your support of the O'Brien Solar Farm, which proposes an excellent partnership between the forward-thinking O'Brien family, our utility, several businesses and the city of Pittsburgh. The budget you are now considering presents several additional smaller steps forward. One of them is reinstatement of the $20,000 Hybrid and Electric Vehicle Fund, Alder Amendment Number 10. It just makes good sense to replace aging city fleet vehicles with appropriate electric vehicles or hybrids. These vehicles cost much less to run and, based on my own personal experience, have very low maintenance costs in the long term. I hope you will vote to reinstate the $20,000 for a hybrid electric vehicle fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
David Garter.
All right, David.
Yes, I'm speaking in support of the budget amendment number 21, which essentially increases staff funding in the area of a horticulturist or a landscape architect. I'm a resident of the city of Pittsburgh. I live at 65 Woodbrook Way, which is a series of condominiums that face both McKee Farms Park or on the other side faces Mickelson Woods. Daily, I'm aware of the maintenance and the activities that go on in the park. And as a member for about a year, as a part of Park Recreation and Forestry Commission, there have been a number of new parks, numerous miles of suburban streets that have been approved by the Common Council. New residents have purchased lots or moved to apartments with the expectation that the city of Pittsburgh will continue to be developed with high-quality parks and natural areas. Many miles of new roads have been designed and installed, but this is only the beginning of creating a quality and vibrant community. With every approved land development, the city has increased tax base and yet the staffing has not increased to support these new obligations. The natural areas are in need of constant attention. Nature doesn't take a vacation. A quality natural area is what the residents of the city of Pittsburgh expect, not an abandoned woodlot that's overrun with invasive species. Only a trained personnel can help with this type of task. And again, I think it's disingenuous for the Common Council to continue to improve, approve new developments and yet not have corresponding increase in funding for those professionals that will maintain and develop the parks and to assure that there is appropriate stewardship. We live right next to the arboretum. Aldo Leopold is a world-famous ecologist. He proposed a land ethic, which really looks at the responsibility of humans to treat the ecology and the land in a responsible way. For the city of Pittsburgh, we cannot do less than that. So again, just in summary, I support the amendment. I think it's the, this is a very modest increase, but it would be a sign that we value quality development of natural areas and that we take the responsibility of good, high-quality stewardship seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Socia Garcia?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Socia Garcia and I'm the Outreach Director of the Latino Chamber of Commerce and it's a great honor to be here with everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to speak in support of the importance of budget amendment three to eight, 15 and 16. And obviously, I'm here to talk to you about the importance of having a teen center. And I'm here not just representing the Latino community, I want to talk as a mother. I live in 5669 King James Court and this center will benefit not only my family, but our neighborhoods, our community and obviously our children. As a part of nonprofit organization, this will also benefit the small business owners and this will help teens to get to safe places, to get in a better environment and to feel that they are supported. I want to talk to you because this will also have a chain effect, you know? If we work together as a community, this will improve the life of these childrens and youth because we're gonna allow them to see other kids who are at the same age, who are facing the same struggles, growing together and, you know, finding better opportunities in life. And this is directly to you as an authorities of our city. I want to talk to you because this is important. You are gonna do the best investment in our community because these are future leaders and these childrens will serve this community and the future. We need to work really hard in improving their life quality. These childrens face a lot of trouble in their homes and right now I think this is a hard time for everyone. And we'll bring them some hope and light, I think. And I will just plead to everyone to please vote in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next?
Steven Schooler?
Hello, my name is Steven Schooler. I live at 2824 Wabesa Avenue. Let me see if I can get it in focus. I'm speaking in favor and support of Amendment 12, which provides funding for the USGS Monitoring Station on Swan Creek. Ron French spoke eloquently in support of the amendment. I do not, and I also provide written comments. The only couple of points I would wish to add is, my understanding is one of the reasons why this wasn't put in the budget in the first place was because the city of Pittsburgh was asked to fund it all by itself. That is no longer the case. At this point with the current amendment, over half of funding is coming from other sources, such as the US Geological Survey, such as the Town of Don and private organizations. So the city of Pittsburgh is not required or being required to fund it entirely. In fact, 50% is being funded by other sources. I think it's really critical that we as a community and that this community establish and protect the environment. The USGS Monitoring Stations provides incredibly accurate and important data, which helps us to analyze and understand the impact of development on water quality. And actually, to provide a feedback loop, we provide numerous measures to protect the environment in terms of stormwater runoff, runoff, but we're never really certain exactly how well it's working. With the monitoring station, we'll be able to see how well all of these stormwater runoff measures are working, how effective they are and if necessary, make improvements. So I hope that you will support the funding of 17, approximately 17,000 to the city budget to provide for the monitoring station. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Ethan Piper?
All right, hi, everyone. My name's Ethan Piper. I'm at 5131 East Cheryl Parkway. I'm here to speak in favor of budget amendments three through eight, 15 and 16, so essentially the teen center. I'm a fairly new resident of Pittsburgh. I moved here earlier this summer from Illinois. Just graduated college, just started a new job. So I know how important it is to have a community, how scary it can be to not have that sometimes. And that's so much more true for younger people. I have younger siblings ranging from seven to 21 years old, so good range. And I see firsthand now the COVID situation, obviously, the mental and emotional toll it's taken on them to not really have a community. And there's a lot of evidence, even in normal situations, that youth in community programs like teen centers need to better academic outcomes and reduce crime rates. There's a ton of research on this, but one particular article I found was from UC Berkeley and it discusses the various causes of community violence and how to prevent it. And it concludes that reinvesting in things like, quote, housing, access to jobs, good education, healthy environments, access to social and health services, safe places to walk, recreate and live, end quote, effectively reduce neighborhood crime even more than expanded policing. And I think the teen center falls within that group of resources. And reduced crime and reduced violence are just one piece of the puzzle. But that's just to say that even beyond my anecdotal feelings on the issue, there's a lot of evidence to show the tangible impact that something like the teen center can make. And the need for a resource like this has been made even more urgent by the opportunity gaps that have been highlighted by COVID. Even before COVID, as of October 2019, Wisconsin had the largest racial achievement gap of any state, according to the State Department of Public Instruction. So COVID has put a spotlight on these gaps that exist racially and between social classes, especially in health outcomes as of recently. And I feel and evidence has shown that extracurricular activities, safe social outlets and other opportunities like the teen center can work to bridge this gap. And the community engagement study would allow us to figure out how to best bridge that gap in a smart way. So I think the time to act is now. Obviously, these gaps exist and COVID is just making it worse and more apparent. So I think it's important that we invest in the teen center as soon as we can. Yeah, thanks for giving me the chance to speak. Thanks to Joe Malamato for keeping me in the loop and keeping us in the loop on a lot of this. And thanks for everyone who's voiced their support and is working to make this reality.
All right, thank you. I know some people have logged in after we got started. So just a reminder that the public has three minutes to speak. So I haven't had a problem with most people tonight, but just a reminder for those who logged on a little later.
Annette Miller?
Hey, everyone. Mayor Richardson and the Common Council of Pittsburgh. My name is Annette Miller. My business is Equity by Design. But just real quick, I was a formal mayor or aide for the city of Madison and I actually did a lot of work over in Allied Drive. I actually was responsible for the vision for Allied Drive along with the mayor at that time and with the community. And as you know, Pittsburgh and the city of Madison have always had to be partners in some of our key spaces. And it seems to me like this, what I want to speak to are amendments three through eight and 15 and 16, which is the teen center and engagement, really make a connection that here we are again really thinking about the connection between who we are as a whole community and not just parts of a community. So I wanted to just bring up a couple of things that I think would really be helpful for you all to know. So Equity by Design as a business does people-centered decision-making. So we work with the community to make sure that their voices are in the center of decision-making. And we've been doing that for the last three and a half years. But prior to that, prior to having a business, doing this work, I actually worked for government and in the private sector, doing community engagement and talking about equity and inclusion. So I've spent a lot of time in Dane County thinking about these issues. And I'm actually really excited that you all have this on your docket to be talking about it because I think the reason this teen space is so important is I think the reason this teen space is so important is that we've really put our teens in a really tough spot. We say that our youth are our future, but we don't give them space to be the future that we want them to be. We either treat them as kids and that they should be in education or somehow they're magically working, but we don't have that in-between space. And if we want our kids to be our future, they need to have a space where they can really imagine themselves. When we think about what a teen space can do, it really creates space for growth, self-determination, really helps them develop their independence. It's a safe space. As you all know, when you think about people who are like you, you're willing to be more vulnerable, you're willing to talk about things that you need to work through or even talk about things that are super important to you. We need to give our teens a space so that they have a place where they can really talk, be vulnerable, and also have supportive staff and also supportive community volunteers who help them be who we see them to be for our future. The other thing that I want to talk about is engagement. So why is the engagement money important? If you're gonna make something and want to create something for constituency or a group, you want to make sure that they are really in the center of what it can look like. You don't want, I mean, quite frankly, you don't want to have a brain doctor doing dentist work, right? So if we're going to create something for youth, you want the youth to be in the center of what it's gonna look like because you want them to use it.
Annette, that's three minutes.
I said thirty-three minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Sorry. Thank you, though.
Not bad.
That's all right. Thank you, sorry.
Beverly Hutcherson?
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for having me. I do have a timer set, so. I am coming to you, having been a resident of Pittsburgh for over fifteen years. I'm also a board member of Operation Fresh Start, which works with seventeen to twenty-four-year-old young people who have not completed their high school diploma and get them on the path and completed with their high school diploma and, most recently, driver's license. I'm also the co-director of the ladder, which works with young people from nine years old on the way up the ladder who are interested in healthcare at the University of Wisconsin Madison School of Medicine and Public Health. And in addition to that, I advise Ahana Maps Pre-Medical Society, which works with undergraduates who are interested in healthcare. I'm a biologist and an administrator for the School of Medicine and Public Health and I am a mother of a sixteen-year-old son. I recognize that the pandemic has caused us to think about the financial impact from our world, our nations, our counties, in all of our job spaces and even in our personal home. And so the thought of being frugal in this moment so that we withstand this pandemic, I understand that. But we have to be mindful that we are investing in the longevity of the county and the state. We lose a lot of talent in Wisconsin for a variety of different reasons and our, our, our young people, we don't understand or know what talent and innovative thought we could be nourishing, that could become a startup company in our state that generates revenue in our county, the next mayor, the next faculty member, the next physician. And so when we think about the money that we're trying to invest, it is the future of our county which will generate revenue. So this is truly a return on investment conversation as well as a holistic conversation related to how we serve the population that we say we care about. So I just wanted to impart that with you to really think about, you can be fiscally conservative.
Looks like she just got muted. I don't know.
It's okay, I was done. Thank you.
Okay. You're done? Okay. Thank you very much.
Susan Easterday?
Hello. Hi. I'm Susan Easterday, Two Seven Three One Osmondson Road, and I'm here in support of Budget Amendment Twenty-One, which is a four-hundred-eighty-hour horticulturalist landscape architect internship, so to speak. I'm a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, but speaking as a citizen, I'm not representing the commission by making remarks here today. This is a position that was cut several years ago and makes its way back into the budget consideration and is cut again. And that it's not reinstated year after year is really counterproductive. I spent time volunteering in the park system on improvements and see firsthand that our current point-six FTE forester natural position is not enough of an adequate skilled position hours to effectively work on improvements in the existing parks. Certainly, work is accomplished and tripped away at here and there in every way manner possible, but we are very limited in our skilled people in those areas. So we do have a quickly growing city and the quality park system consists of well-managed and maintained natural areas, but the staff hours haven't grown to match the city's growth. During the comprehensive plan review, in response to the question, what do you like about Pittsburgh? Many indicated they appreciate our park system, including, and they often mention this, the paved multi-use paths that take them all around the parks and the city. From the paths, you can see lots of green during temperate weather, but please do understand green, growing things like trunks, trees, grasses and flowers within unmoed areas of our parks are not alone indicators of a quality native environment. The opposite is true. In our parks, we have acres of non-native invasive weedy garbage growth with few funds to clear out or for restoration. These areas don't, therefore, they don't offer accessibility nor opportunity for enrichment learning nor for restful contemplation, appreciation of our natural environment. As such, these spaces don't promote quality environments for wildlife. We may see some living creatures, but the trashy growth excludes more quality wildlife than it allows. So the major outdoor classroom experience these areas of the parks offer is an illustration of what not to do. This four-hundred-eighty-hour LTE positioning question certainly doesn't solve all these problems, but it is a twelve-week opportunity that creates steps in the right direction. So.
Sweetie, you're at your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Rupeiper?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight in support of the proposed budget amendment for the Swan Creek monitoring station. I'm Mike Rupeiper. I'm the Deputy Agency Director for the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the commission. Several of the city of Pittsburgh's peer communities, namely the city of Madison and the city of Middleton, have been contributing funding to USGS monitoring stations for several decades now. These long-term continuous monitoring stations are crucial to obtaining the objective water quality and water quantity data necessary for making science-based management decisions for our watersheds. The protection of natural environment is a goal that you've adopted in the city of Pittsburgh's comprehensive plan. Support of this monitoring station is a way for the city to demonstrate your commitment to that goal. Information collected with this monitoring station will be invaluable in downstream Wabesa, which are one of the region's highest-quality wetlands and recognized as a statewide wetland gem by the Wisconsin Wetland Association because of their unique ecological and cultural significance. In recognition of this, the Lake Wabesa Conservation Association has pledged funding to help support this monitoring station. Both in a responsible manner results in a higher quality of life for us all, another principle adopted in the city's comprehensive plan. This monitoring station is an investment in supporting responsible growth in this watershed by collecting the data necessary to document the effectiveness of the city's stormwater management systems or identifying areas for their improvement. Perhaps most importantly, support of this monitoring station shows that the city is a conscientious member of a regional community, a city who will work collaboratively with your neighbors like the town of Don, who has also pledged funding to make this monitoring station a reality. On behalf of the Regional Planning Commission, I want to thank Alder Gerhard for introducing this budget amendment and I thank you for your consideration and approving it.
All right, thank you.
Nima Hossini? Sorry?
I was extremely close. So I live at Five-Nine-Two-Two Schuman Drive, a few houses in from Seminole, and just here to express support for the proposed crosswalk. It's a busy intersection. I appreciate the reduction in speed limit. It, you know, has taken some time for it to really take hold. I think people still go through too quickly. But, you know, beyond that, it's just it's a very busy thoroughfare and having that extra protection there, I think, is, is important. The sooner the better, right? Because if something goes wrong, then it's too late. So that's really it. The reason I joined was to express that support. However, I did not know about this teen center being in consideration and I also fully support that. You know, I think kids need a place to feel comfortable and so, yeah, swayed by everybody that spoke up. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jeff Wazowski? Sorry?
Oh, thank you so much for having me here. I agree with Nima. You guys taught me into that teen center, especially now that COVID hit and the teens need somewhere to go. Kids, obviously, were safe or were at home for a while. It plays a big part in their development. My name is Jeff Wazowski and I live at Five-Nine-Two-Two Schuman Drive. I'm here to discuss Amendment Nineteen to the twenty-twenty-one Pittsburgh budget. I have two sons who are four and seven years old. We cross at the Schuman Seminole intersection quite a bit. We frequent the local businesses and cross to get to the capital city bike path toward Martin. I find this intersection extremely dangerous and a hazard to the public safety. When we cross, it seems like we are literally playing the video game Frogger when we're going across. They reduced the speed down to thirty-five miles an hour last year, but traffic continues to go above, like what Nima just spoke about, goes above fifty-five miles an hour or above at times. We need something there to assist the citizens to cross. The Seminole Forest and Seminole Ridge are having a generational flip and a lot of younger families with kids are coming to the area. We also have a lot of families with the Seminole Prairie, our Stoner Prairie development. This can also be seen by the pool membership capacity. I would also like for the, I would all, I would like for the city to recommend this amendment ASAP before, before a tragedy to happen. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Katie Chudnik?
Good evening. My name is Katie Trudnik. I am a District One resident of Pittsburgh and I'm a graduate student studying veterinary medicine and public health at the University of Wisconsin. I support Amendments Three through Eight and Fifteen, but want to specifically focus on Amendment Sixteen, conducting a community engagement study for the teen center. At the October twenty-eighth Committee of the Whole Meeting, concerns were raised about purchasing a building before a community engagement study was conducted, stating that the study may identify a need for a teen center elsewhere in Dane County. While I appreciate this concern, I would like to point out that the purpose of the community engagement study is not to establish the best location for the teen center because this has already been done. The need for a community center in this specific neighborhood was previously identified in the twenty-seventeen Anton Drive redevelopment plan and in the support registered by several residents in previous council meetings and in this one. Rather, the community engagement study will seek to equitably involve community voices to identify needs that the teen center should address. Just as a public input campaign was utilized to develop improvement plans for Law Park, which is a green space sandwiched between John Nolan and Manona, and Lake Manona, this study will lay a foundation for the teen center to build off of for years to come. I encourage council members to act now to pass budget amendments related to the teen center. While vacancies exist in this area, the fact that Little John's Restaurant recently purchased the previously proposed building for the teen center is a testament to the potential brevity for this window of opportunity. Please support our youth and families by casting your vote in favor of the teen center. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Nate Uwansky?
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and all the people, and thanks for your time tonight. My name is Nate Uwansky and I'm a resident residing in the Tower Hill neighborhood of District Two. I'm currently the chair of the city's Resource Conservation Commission, or the RCC, and I'm representing that group here tonight. We had a meeting last night and they wanted me to speak tonight. So the Resource Conservation Commission strongly encourages the common council to support Alder Gerhard's Amendment Number Twelve by adding the Swan Creek Monitoring Station to the budget for the following reasons and give Mike Rupeiper some credit to these and to the CERC for providing these reasons, but the Wabesa Wetlands are one of the region's highest-quality wetlands and are recognized as a wetland gem by the Wisconsin Wetlands Association because of their unique ecological and cultural significance. Swan Creek Watershed is a major watershed within Wabesa Wetlands and is primarily located in our backyard in the city of Pittsburgh. The land use changes due to the development occurring, you know, in our city is currently planned to continue and be within the Swan Creek Watershed. And part of the mission of this Pittsburgh Stormwater Utility, which the RCC has, you know, goes into a lot of detail with, again, the mission is to control pollutants and suspended solids, which this monitoring station will help much better understand. The USGS has a long history of installing these stations and helped provide some funding to assist communities with this, too, and like Mike was saying, provides water quality and Ron French for providing water quality data essential for water resource planning and assessment purposes for many streams, not only this stream, but local streams as well. UW Madison Water Resources Management recommended this installation on Swan Creek. It's part of their study as well. Nice report to, that illustrates that as well. And finally, the Wisconsin DNR Department of Resources, Natural Resources, and their approval of the city of Pittsburgh's recent, the Fahy South Urban Service Area Amendment, recommended that the city pursue this with the USGS to help fund and implement the station on Swan Creek at Layla Road. And so again, the RCC, the Resource Conservation Commission, is in agreement and strongly encourages council to support Amendment Number Twelve. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Marsha Griskovich?
Good evening. My name is Marsha Griskovich. I reside at Fifty-Eight, Sixty-Seven Woods Edge Road. As president of the Pittsburgh Senior Center Friends Board, I'm here to provide you with the board's opinions on a couple of amendments to the proposed operating budget. Amendment Twenty-Four, proposed by Alder Udell, seeks to reinstate funding for cable service at the senior center and other city locations. As Director Jill Mccone wrote to you, cable service at the senior center is considered one of the programming options available at the center. Many seniors can't afford cable service at home. At the senior center, those seniors have access to the local, national and international news and sporting events, fact TV programming, including these meetings, as well as entertainment, all while enjoying the socialization aspects of being at the center. There have been times when the Friends have funded projects that should probably have been funded by the city. Flooring in the health room comes to mind. The old flooring was sticky and never felt totally clean. Modern, easy-to-clean flooring has been installed by city staff, but the flooring itself was paid for by the Friends to the tune of, and in my original email statement that I sent to you, I said two thousand dollars. I was wrong. It was eleven hundred dollars, so nine hundred dollars less. That was a one-time expense. Cable service would be an ongoing expense and unlikely to ever be placed back in the city budget. I hope the council will vote in favor of Amendment Twenty-Four. Amendment Fifteen seeks to reinstate the purchase of the building for the teen center in accordance with CIP sixty-two seventy-five. The Friends are interested in learning more about the possible uses of such a building, especially what uses seniors who reside west of Verona Road could make of the facility. We hope you'll keep seniors in mind. We hope you'll keep seniors in mind when planning this facility. In essence, we support all the healthy neighborhood initiatives in Pittsburgh. So we hope you will reinstate this purchase. As a twenty-eight-year resident of Seminole Forest, I want to address Amendment nineteen, which has already been spoken about by a couple of people. It's the adding of pedestrian-activated crossing caution lights at Seminole Highway and Schuman Drive. I've crossed that intersection numerous times while walking through the neighborhood. The amount of traffic has increased so much since development began south of there, most of it at speeds higher than the posted speed. I believe that people will use the caution lights if they are installed, and I believe drivers will get accustomed to those lights much more readily than they did at the bike path on PD. Visually, it'll be easier to see the lights and the pedestrians than in other locations because Seminole Highway is so flat there. I hope the council will vote in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Next.
Michael Ergesito.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Mike Ehrstow. I live at five nine three two Schuman Drive here in Pittsburgh. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm the President of the Seminole Forest Neighborhood Association, and I'm speaking in support of Amendment nineteen for the pedestrian-activated crossing caution lights at the intersection of Seminole Highway and Schuman Drive. As already mentioned, Seminole Highway is very busy, and the speed limit, although it was reduced to thirty-five miles per hour, is many vehicles still drive faster than that. Many neighbors, including those with small children, cross Seminole Highway from Schuman Drive to gain access to the Southwest commuter bike trail. And part of the problem is that there is no sidewalk on the east side of Seminole Highway, so that's why you have to cross Seminole Highway to get to the sidewalks that are on the, on the west side of the highway. In addition, others cross Seminole Highway to walk to many other nearby businesses, including the ones along the corner of Seminole Highway and McKee Road, such as Bereks. With the addition of new businesses opening up along Sub-Zero Parkway, such as the Hop House Brewery, as well as the further development of the new homes in the neighborhood to the south, pedestrian traffic across Seminole Highway is certain to increase significantly. It already has. Furthermore, this intersection is adjacent to the Seminole Pool and Tennis Club. And during the summer, when there are swim meets, many people park across Seminole Highway because of extra parking there and have to cross. And so this is a very busy, a lot of people crossing here. We are requesting that the crosswalk with lighted flashing yellow lights be placed at this intersection. Not only will it help protect citizens who cross the road, but perhaps the improved access may be beneficial to the businesses that cross Seminole Highway because of improved access. We think that this would be a low-cost solution that would have numerous benefits to the citizens of Pittsburgh without any significant downside.
All right, thank you.
Baltasar Deanda Santana.
Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. Buenas noches a todos. My name is Baltasar Deanda Santana. I'm the Executive Director of the Latino Academy for Forest Development. And I'm here in support of passing budget amendments three to eighteen, fifteen, and sixteen. I do not live in Pittsburgh. I wish I did. I really wish I did. I think even just talking about this teen center really gives me some hope. I've been, my previous work, my previous life was about biking and, you know, doing a lot of bike advocacy. And I was very involved somehow in some of these community engagement opportunities. And one thing that Pittsburgh does very well is always ask what are the needs out there? And I like that. At the same time, I do, I do encourage you to, to stop asking and maybe, you know, start doing some of these great projects. I think the community, our Pittsburgh community, has this great opportunity in, in, in front of you and, you know, it will be great for, for, for this great city to, to add. Many of our students at Latino Academy, you know, there are, there are older folks, but they have kids, they have teenagers, and they don't need a place where they can gather. Latino Academy is not big enough for the teens to come and gather. I think teens have to gather in their own space. I think this is a great opportunity for us, for the whole city of Pittsburgh, to provide training, education, and jobs, opportunity to the teens. I think sometimes, you know, it's, I always wonder, a city, for me, a city, the city's values is important. If they put people first, I value that city. If we put infrastructure first, if we put gardens first, sometimes I wonder what the values of the city are. And, you know, I, I know the city of Pittsburgh. I work with you and, and you do an amazing job. I think you're an example. Even just having these conversations, growing and pushing the envelope a little bit more. So, you know, I really encourage you, for the sake of Pittsburgh, our communities, you know, brown, whites, blacks, among, for us to, to be able to have this place available for, for these teens. So, thank you very much and que pasen buenas noches. Have a good, have a great night.
Thank you. Gracias.
Karen Koller.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to come and speak tonight. I'm really excited to be here. I am also really happy to hear all the comments that are being made about the teen center. I am the proud Executive Director of Centrispano of Dane County, located right there on eight ten West Badger Road, close to Pittsburgh, and I'm here in support of Amendments three to eight, fifteen and sixteen. In particular, the outright purchase of the building for the teen center and then the community engagement study that would span two years. I have to tell you, when I heard about this, I became incredibly excited. For one, there are not enough spaces that have been built with the voice of community and young people at the, at the center. Most of them tend to think that young people need to be fixed or there are adverse behaviors that need to be taken care of. There are, that there are education gaps that are present, and we fail to recognize that young people are really human beings that are developing and are in need of holistic supports. Prior to my years at Centro, I've been there for seven years. I work close to thirty years now in the maternal and child health field, really focusing on maternal engagement, but also youth and young people and what determines their decision-making. I came to the decision that the work that we do at Centro is instrumental to create a space where young people can really develop their future, really feel like they belong and that they feel engaged and that in turn they can be successful in life and education and in community. I've been waiting for city and county-wide initiatives that really take this perspective to heart. I am eager to partner with the city of Pittsburgh to think creatively about what this teen space may look like when we involve people that have really a deep understanding about youth development work. And then also when we really focus on listening to the young people that are going to inhabit the space. I think oftentimes also when it comes to the greater Madison area, there's a deep need in bringing communities together, specifically at this time, communities of color, young people that are your constituents. This center could provide a think tank and incubation space for ideas that could fit into Pittsburgh and could really transform the future of the city. I think one of the speakers said, asked a question about what do you appreciate about Pittsburgh? What I appreciate about Pittsburgh is how diverse the community is becoming and how right now you're taking this bold step to try to really prioritize something that I don't believe has been prioritized before in the city. And like Baltasar actually said, people matter. People matter. You cannot have open spaces without families, creating roots, engaging in dialogue, and being the future of the community that you serve. So I'm really proud about those amendments. I'm most excited about the forward-thinking purchase of the building right away because that sends a strong signal based on previous data. And I, and I would really look forward to partnering, thinking about creative ideas to potentially even rent space to become a part of that space. We have a similar partnership in Sun Prairie or Sunshine.
Okay, that's your, that's the three minutes. Sorry. Thank you, Karen. Your time.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan Beck.
Hi, everybody. My name is Nathan Beck. I am the Madison Area Out-of-School Time Coordinator. It's a joint program between the city of Madison and Madison Metropolitan School District and dozens of out-of-school time providers and other neighborhood centers. And I'm here to speak in support of the teen center and in general, any investment in young people in our community. And there's been a lot of great compelling testimony about this already, which is great, so I don't have to be compelling. But what I will do is share a little bit of data about what we know about young people, their access to opportunities in Dane County, and what the benefits are. And so I'll share some outcome data. That is all from the Dane County Youth Assessment. It is a survey administered every three years to tens of thousands of Dane County youth. So these are all local young people. And what it says is when students have access to neighborhood centers, their outcomes across domains are significantly better. A quick summary of just a few points. When students have access to neighborhood centers, they are more than twice as likely, or to say that they have adults in their lives that they can trust. They are half as likely to feel sad or hopeless. They cut class about half as much as students that don't have access. They try tobacco at about half the rate. They exercise regularly, average twenty-four minutes per, per week. They have better grades, higher aspirations and belief that they will finish and attend college, have less suicide ideation, and drink alcohol less. And so that's just a quick snapshot. There's, there's quite a bit more. But, you know, I've been in this role for about three years and I've shared this data a number of times, and nobody's ever really surprised by this, right? You all know that when we invest in young people, it produces positive outcomes for them and for our larger community. But what is actually surprising to people are a few other things. People are actually surprised with how scarce these opportunities actually are in our community. We imagine ourselves in Dane County as a place with rich opportunities, and that is true. And even so, though, we have thousands and thousands of young people, teens, that still don't have access to teen centers that want it. In Madison Metropolitan School District alone, we have fifteen hundred middle school students that don't have access. I don't have data on Pittsburgh itself, but, but it is, it's not insignificant, the number of students that actually need access. And the other thing that is interesting and surprising to people a lot is, is how little public funding there actually is. A lot of people imagine that after-school programs are well, well-funded through public sources. If you looked at it as a sector as a whole, public funding is less than ten percent of the total sector. So a relatively insignificant part, but really a crucial part, because often the public funding is what is supporting the most vulnerable families. And so I urge you, with an opportunity, to increase investment in young people and, and support the, the outcomes that that produces for them and for our community to support any investment in a teen center.
All right, thank you.
Shelley Malofsky.
I am a resident in District Four. I support several of the amendments presented by the Alders, including the environment-focused ones by Alder Gerhart and the cable IT ones for the senior center. But right now I want to speak about the amendments related to the teen center. I've been a longtime proponent of neighborhood centers and youth centers, and for all the reasons everybody else has said, so I'm not going to repeat it. What I want to focus on is what I think I've heard from some, which is great idea, wrong time. And I would suggest sometimes the right time is, is now. I don't think this is going to be the only year in which there's a difficult budget, particularly related to COVID. But mostly, I think, because of the effects of COVID on our teens and in youth and the uptick in behaviors by teens in Pittsburgh that we do not want to see, I would say that now is exactly the right time. And while there may probably need to be multi-pronged approaches to some of those behaviors, having an environment where there's a positive mentoring and a sense of positive community for teens, I think, has got to be a really important prong. So I encourage the city to approve getting into a building. Alder Maldonado has proposed one in Jamestown, which is one of the three neighborhoods in the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative that are said to be in need of projects like this. I think the Leopold area will have a community center proposed, and the Boys and Girls Club is near the Dunn's Marsh area. So I, I think Jamestown is the place that is where this teen center should be properly cited. I think Alder Maldonado has come up with some options for bringing in revenue streams to, to help with the, the lift of the debt and purchasing a building. But I also think that there's a psychology that once you commit a significant sum of money towards something, I think you are incentivized to try to make it a success. So I think we need to get into a building. We need to start the activities. The engagement study has, has, will, is important, and it will refine the activities that we start with once we purchase the building. But I also want to say that I think there's a parallel here with the recent referendum in the Madison Public School system. Everybody also said to MPS, this is the exact wrong time for you to ask taxpayers to add to their obligations. And obviously, that's a much heavier impact on property taxes, property owners' taxes.
Sorry to interrupt, Shelley, but you're at the three minutes.
Purchase of this building would be.
Thank you, though. All right. Who do we have next?
Samara Nickmeyer.
All right.
Hello. Thank you all for your time and attention tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. My name is Tamara Knickmeyer, and I am here to speak on behalf of Lake Wabisa Conservation Association. We are in strong support of Budget Amendment Number Twelve for adding a water quality monitoring station to Swan Creek. LWCA's mission is promoting the preservation, protection, and enhancement of the Lake Wabisa ecosystem for all to enjoy. Our organization was established close to thirty years ago to bring attention to a company that was trying to put a landfill in close proximity to Lake Wabisa. Today, it's hard to believe anyone would propose such an idea. We have come so far in understanding and improving water quality of our lakes and streams. Our organization understands the critical role of the wetlands and the role they play in the health of the lake. We are very proud to have one of the region's highest-quality wetlands in our front yard. We are also very fortunate to have an in-depth study from the university to help guide us in maintaining the health of the Wabisa wetlands. Adding a monitoring station to Swan Creek is a key recommendation of the study. Continuous monitoring will provide data to understand what is being fed into the wetland on a regular basis. With changes in weather patterns and expanding development, we can no longer depend on intermittent sampling to give us a true picture of what is going into the wetland. Monitoring and tracking data will give us advanced warning of changes that could damage this ecosystem. The United States Geological Survey has the technology and the experience to make this happen. The Department of Natural Resources, Capital Area Regional, Regional Planning Commission, and a study from the UW are all telling us this is the right thing to do. We have several organizations and municipalities willing to provide support, both financially and in labor, to make this happen. Now is the time to make this happen. Today, we look at the northwest shores of Lake Wabisa and see the William G. Looney Lake Farm County Park instead of Libby Landfill, and we applaud the decision that was made thirty years ago. Looking forward in thirty years, what will our wetlands look like? And how will we view the decision that is in front of you tonight? Please vote to approve this budget amendment number twelve. And big thank you goes out to Alder Garrett Gerhart for bringing this forward and making this change noticeable for all of us.
Thank you. All right, we got two videos next. That's all the people online.
Hello, Mayor Richardson, Pittsburgh Common Council, and fellow Pittsburgh residents. My name is Kate Prehn. My family and I have lived in the Jamestown neighborhood for the past four and a half years. I'm sorry that I cannot join you for tonight's meeting. It is important and critical that we invest in all of our Pittsburgh neighborhoods, especially when it comes to youth and families. I'm a proud Jamestown resident, and I can see the great opportunity that exists here to support the families in my neighborhood, which is why I'm urging each of you to pass budget. which is why I'm urging each of you to pass Budget Amendments proposed by Alder Maldonado, Three Through Eight, Fifteen, and Sixteen. I have worked in higher education and fundraising for the last 10 years, and have been a youth mentor for 12 years. I have seen firsthand what youth and teens are capable of when they are supported and surrounded by opportunities, programs, and mentors. Every child and teen in our neighborhood and community deserves the opportunity to succeed. Today, you are faced with the decision to vote on these amendments to build this space here in Fitchburg, particularly in the Jamestown neighborhood where it is needed most. I urge you to support the teen center building and the community engagement study. I think these two go hand in hand, but it's important that the teen center be built as soon as we can and then continue to refine the strategy and outreach with the community engagement study. I think we are all sick of hearing the term unprecedented times, but that's exactly what this time is. If we do not invest in a youth center now because budget constraints, the unknown, or fears of COVID-19, we will be contributing to the growing gap of economic and racial disparities in our community, especially in the Jamestown neighborhood. These disparities were severe before the pandemic, and they will only become more amplified as time goes on. I want to thank all of you for your dedication to the city of Fitchburg and each of its neighborhoods, and please support Amendments Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Fifteen, and Sixteen. Thank you for your time and all the support, and be well.
Last one is three minutes even.
Hi, my name is Kevin Alak, President of the South Central Federation Labor AFL-CO. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight via recording because I am out of electricity right now, and so I am speaking out of my car. So I am speaking tonight representing the South Central Federation Labor AFL-CO. We're a labor council that consists of about 100 unions located here in Dane County. We also work with other counties surrounding Dane County. Those unions represent all walks of life, whether it be the building trades, the industrial trades, manufacturing trades, service sector, as well as the public sector at all levels of government, and then many other types of workers as well, whether it be the tech world or otherwise. I am speaking tonight in favor of Amendments Three Through Eight, as well as Amendments Fifteen and Sixteen in relation to the Fitchburg 2021 budget. We support Amendment Fifteen, which would budget for the purchase of a building to help with youth when it comes to a host of different issues, as well as Amendment Sixteen, which would budget the $50,000 for one year of a two-year community engagement study. And then the other amendments are ways to fund that, which we think is very fiscally responsible. Modest reductions when it comes to some of the issues of larger vehicle replacement or parking lot repair and building repair funds. Very modest reductions in those areas. With that said, we're excited to support this because we think this is a great opportunity to partner up potentially to help do what labor, one of the strengths labor has. And that is, when it comes to our youth or many other people within our community, we have unions that have apprenticeship programs. We have unions that have mentoring programs. And we can assist with the development of young people when it comes to their leadership skills, academic skills, as well as career, potential career skills as well. And I think this potential for collaboration with our partners, as well as our trade unions and training programs, as well as the Roanoke School District, could really bring some positive gains for Fitchburg. One of the organizations we work with is the Wisconsin Regional Training Partnership, WRT Big Step, which has been very successful with Dane County as well as Madison. So we see the importance when it comes to our teens that are in the school programming for a youth center, and especially in this particular neighborhood. And I would support these amendments and hope you do so as well. Thank you.
All right. We also got a number of emails in. I've kind of separated into various buckets of issues. We had a number of people write in in support of the amendments around the teen center, which are Amendments Three Through Eight, Fifteen, and Sixteen. Those people are Robert Proctor, Sam Voorhees, Michael Ledusa, Annalise Howell, David McHugh, Dawn Fairley, Anie McHugh, Calvin Barrett, Ursula Edwards, Shalisa Johnson, Paul Muir, Sean Koval, Ryan Huesamin, Elvis Mclepine, Wendy Hathaway, Andy Garmel, Regina Ryan, Frances Huntley-Cooper. I think it's Susan and Harold Torgeson, the owners of Rough and It in Style. They just signed their names, and it was hard for me to read, but it's the Rough and It in Style owners. And then also Oscar Morales from the Latino Consortium for Action. We had a number of people also write in in support of the sidewalk lighting on Seminole Highway. In support was Tiffany Roljen, Jennifer and Jeff Zisser, Lu and Su Mazai, Joel Luther, Orin Carr, Georgia Asher, Eric Hofmeister, Adam Becken, Peter Lundberg, Ken and Paula Lutz, Dennis Everson, and Adam Tierney. We also had two people register that were not in support of the lights on Seminole Highway. All these are Amendment 19 for those at home. The people that were not in support are Michael Thorson and Kathy Dudgeon. People in support of Amendment 24, which is adding the cable back into the budget. Adam Tierney, Georgia Asher, Orin Carr, Bob Hillner, Judith Knackers, Kathy Sosnowski, Jim Sosnowski, Lee Islandfelt, and Alice Jensen. These are people in support of Amendment 12, the monitoring station on Swan Creek. Joan Bear, Joy Zedler, George Keeler, and Douglas Bach. I had Kelly Haslam write in in support of a lot of amendments. It's Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Twenty-nine, Twenty-one, Twenty-three, Twenty-seven, One, Fifteen, and Sixteen. Will Bussi also was in support of a large number of amendments. Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Twenty-one, Twenty-seven, Twenty-nine, and Number One. Mary Houston was also in support of a large number of amendments. Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Twenty-one, Twenty-five, Twenty-six, Twenty-seven, and Twenty-eight. Wendy Hathaway was also writing in in support of Numbers Ten, Eleven, and Twenty-three. Terrell Brock wrote in in support of Amendment 21, which is the LTE Horticulturists, and also Number Twenty-seven, which is the Tree Advisory Meetings. And Jeremy Hecht also wrote in in support of Twenty-one and Twenty-seven. All right. That is all I have for the public hearing, so we can.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just got a couple more that came in sort of like probably a month ago, so I just wanted to note those for the record. So Kirsten Walsman, as well as Holly Harper, and Franny Lyons, as well as Jasmine Zapata, had all written in support.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for that. I didn't go quite far enough back. All right. Then going on to unfinished business, we have a resolution here. Julia, do you want to do the motion?
Okay. So I move a motion to approve Resolution R-190-20, Resolution Adapting Special Rules for 2021 Budget Adoption. Second.
Sent in by Gabriella. Do you want to speak to it, or you want Misty to speak to this, Julia?
Yes. Yes.
You want Misty, or you?
Yeah, Misty. Yeah.
Misty. Okay. Go ahead, Misty.
Okay.
All right. So I'll share my screen quick. So what's in front of you now is the ordinances. So the ordinances lay out the process that we follow in order to approve the budget. And I highlighted this yellow section here, which is the debate limitations, just because that's something we need to make sure we keep in mind. So each amendment, including amendments to the amendments, is limited to five minutes and then can be extended by vote of the council for 10 minutes. And then each council member can only speak no more than twice on each amendment. So Pat Marsh will be keeping the stopwatch, and Valerie Zisman, the city attorney, will be checking off to make sure everybody is only speaking twice. The making a motion, seconding a motion, that type of thing doesn't count as a speaking time. But if you answer a question, if somebody interrupts you, all of that stuff, that would count. So make sure you keep those in mind. What this resolution actually is doing, though, is we have these ordinance procedures, but what supplemental procedures can we also adopt so that we can try to have a budget adopted at the end of the night? So in the resolution was a proposed process from me, which is what we had from last year. So step one is approving this resolution or having this conversation we're having now. Step two is going through the process per ordinance. Then we'll take a recess where I will coordinate with the city clerk, make sure that I have the correct amendments approved and amended, and then we can see if our budget meets levy limits or not. If it does not, you'll see we have a separate agenda item for tonight's meeting of possible reconsiderations. And that's where the Step Four comes in, is those possible reconsiderations. So what this does is it essentially scraps Roberts Rules of Order, and it says that any of the amendments can be reconsidered on the same night, and it can be anybody that says that they want to reconsider an amendment. Still, each one of them can only be reconsidered once per round, I'll call it. And then there'll still be speaking limits, so only allowed to speak once on each amendment, because in theory, we've already had a lot of this conversation. And then total discussion is limited to five minutes again. So we'll go through kind of a second round. Then we'll take another recess where I'll coordinate with the city clerk, make sure I have the numbers right, and hopefully meet levy limits. If not, we would go through that process again until we get to a budget that meets the limits. Once we get past that stage, then there'll be an opportunity for you all to have closing statements. This is outlined in the ordinance. You'll each be allowed to give kind of an overall impression or feeling about the budget overall, and then we would adopt the budget resolution. So this is the process that was included in the resolution. We did have a suggestion to modify the process a little bit that you guys can consider, you know, rather than going through, you know, I'm going to do Number 12, and then I want to do Four, and then I want to do 10, and we jump all over the place, that you could instead accumulate a list of all of the amendments you want to be reconsidered so that you know kind of what's on the table and then go through them in amendment order. So if you want to make that change or any other change, council will need to amend the resolution, this one, to do whatever process you would like to be that supplements the city's ordinance.
Yep. And I'll just say, I suggested this to Misty because otherwise I just have to sit here and try and pick, I guess, whoever I see first. It just seemed like a more fair process for the reconsideration of amendments so that I'm not put in a place of who do I call on first and second. And I believe, Misty, in that instance, you know, once we consider a couple amendments, if we do, if you will, balance, then it's over. And so if you wanted to do some, you know, consider something else, sorry, you're out of luck if we get to that balance part, right?
Not, it depends on what council wants to do. So we could, in theory, go through each amendment an additional time, as long as we balance at the end. That's the important thing.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Gabriella, so you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So we can each speak twice during that initial debate period. The initial debate period is five minutes long. But if we want to extend it, does it extend for five additional minutes or for 10 additional amendments? Do you know, like, five minutes up to 10, or is it 10 minutes?
So it says may extend debate to 10 minutes.
Okay. So it's five additional minutes.
Mm-hmm.
And then when it hits 10, that's a total hard cap. We can't move beyond that?
I think the council ultimately can vote to extend time if the council.
So right away, I got to stop everyone. I need people to raise their hand and be recognized because that's going to be a problem throughout the entire night. So thank you for chiming in, but I want to make sure people are doing that right away. All right.
And can I have one more clarifying question?
Sure. Yep. And I'll go to Dorothy.
The, and then for, if we do end up reconsidering, we can each only speak once. Is that correct? Which is different than the original.
All reconsiderations are just the one time. Yeah.
No, but like, each person only gets to speak once during that debate. Is that correct? So like, during the normal debate, we're speaking, we can speak up to twice. But during the reconsideration debate, we can only speak once. That's my understanding.
Correct. Yep. Unless Misty wants to correct me.
No, correct. At least as proposed by this resolution.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Dorothy?
Yep. So for some reason, my space bar doesn't work like it's supposed to. I was going to suggest if we want to speak, we can put just a note in the chat box, and then it's real easy to follow who wants to speak and what order the requests came in. That's the way we do it for county board, and it makes it real clear whose turn it is next to talk.
The only problem with that is that the three people here in council chambers, I don't think, are logged into the Zoom meeting. I know I'm not, so I can't see that. That's the challenge with that, unfortunately. Good idea, otherwise. All right. Any other questions? Julia?
Yes. I am kind of confused here. I want more clarification while we are doing this. My other question is, if reconsideration from that list will then be moved and act upon in Amendment Number Order, why do we need to fully follow the amendment number? Why we cannot follow the order of, if I tell you I want to put a reconsideration amendment, why is it going first?
Well, because I think if we're going to go through and get the full list, the, you know, I was just going to go down the line, one through four, District one through four. And so then that would give, in theory, an unfair advantage to people in District One that their amendments would get discussed first. And it's in a, it's a somewhat random order, but not a random order. It's all the things that are taking things out first and then things are putting back in after that. And so I think the idea is that, you know, if we're way over budget, then, you know, you need to remove some things. If a number of those things don't get removed, and then you're still reconsidering things that are adding back in, you might not want to do that because you're already over budget and you might not want to add more things back into the budget at that point in time. Misty, do you want to speak to that, too?
Yeah, so it's just a way to try to stay organized. And again, council gets to choose as a body how you want to do it. And the thought was then you'd at least know which amendments were in this reconsideration round so that you knew what to expect.
My concern is like, in case I go into a reconsideration with one of my amendments, and then the amendment before the mine already went over the limit. So doesn't mean that I am not going to be able to, we are not going to be able to discuss that, or we are going to go through the end of the reconsideration round, and then if we don't, you know, if we are over the tax levy limit, we are going to go back to another reconsideration round. You know what I mean? This, I want to be sure.
Yep. So if you, someone chooses to amend the Step Four that I've suggested, we would go through all of the amendments people want to reconsider before we recalculate. So it wouldn't be, oh, we got to the point where we're good, now we stop. We would go through all of those amendments.
Okay. So that one, I want to be clear, because that one is critical. You know what I mean? Like, and then if we don't, you know, if we need to reconsider again, we reconsider again, but, you know, okay.
Yeah. But someone needs to make a motion to do that. If no one does, then that's not how we're going to do it. So... If no one wants to propose adopting the ultimate Step Four, then we can vote on the motion to not do that.
Oh, I have another question.
Okay.
In the reconsideration process, we can amend something, an amendment?
Misty?
Absolutely. So council can always choose to amend an amendment. We just won't take amendments from the. We just won't take amendments from the floor that are brand new.
No, I know.
But amending the amendment is always allowed.
Okay.
All right, Sarah?
I'd make a motion to accept the alternate process proposed.
For step four? All right, is there a second?
For step four, please, yes. Sounds like that will allow everyone to be able to have their amendments reconsidered and discussed.
All right, is there a second? Saying about Tom, all right. Any further discussion on the alternate step four? Yeah, Misty?
Erin, would you like me to put it on the screen so people can?
Sure. There you go, and I know that.
You can zoom in a little bit.
I think you sent it out earlier this week on email. If people have their email up. All right, and I think the other thing that is highlighted a couple times in A is, in reconsideration, you can ask to reconsider any motion and any amendment, I should say. It doesn't have to be one that you proposed. It can be any amendment. And then B is kind of the, really the key to it, the change is when we have to, I'm assuming that we're gonna be over budget the first time through. And so when we reconsider, we get a list of all of them instead of what it typically had been in the past, where I just call on someone randomly. It's not a really fair process for me, I guess, in that instance. And I want someone to say, oh, you picked this person or that person for whatever reason. Any further comments on the proposed change to number four? Okay, so then I will take a vote on just the amendment. So all in favor of changing step four, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, then that.
Nay.
I see one nay. I believe that passes, though. And so now we're back to the main motion that's amended. Any further discussion? All right, then all in favor of approving as amended, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, so we have our process done. Next, I believe we need a motion before we can get into the amendments. So Julia, do you want to do that?
We already, we already passed the motion.
For A, but now we gotta do B.
Oh. I move a motion to approve resolution R-174-20, adopting the 2021 annual city operating budget.
Second.
Signed by Joe. All right, one thing I will say upfront also is the omnibus amendments, I'm gonna try a voice vote for those. But for every other amendment, I'm gonna do a roll call vote every time, just so that everyone knows upfront, we'll just do a roll call vote. I don't think the omnibus amendments are gonna be controversial. Misty certainly hopes they're not. And so we'll do a voice vote on omnibus, but otherwise we will do a roll call for everything else. Misty, anything you have before we get started?
Nope, I don't have anything else.
Julia?
Yeah, I think we need to do roll calling the number in the omnibus, number D.
Okay.
One second.
For the refuse and recycling rate?
Yes, that one is yes. That one is for gold, yeah.
All right, I can do that for D.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then if there's nothing else, Misty, is, Julia, are you gonna do the omnibus motions, or is someone else gonna do those? Julia, do you want to make the motions for the omnibus amendments?
So you need one of the other to do that, or Misty can do it?
Misty can't make a motion, so.
Okay. So I move, I move a motion to adjust for refuse, no, sorry, that one is D. I move a motion to approve, to adjust the general transportation aid, GTA, to DOT estimate.
Second.
Signed by Randy. All right. I guess this one's, these are a little weird, Misty. Do you want to speak to them, I guess?
So in theory, we talked about the committee the whole meeting, so I don't know that I need to, but I can, if that's what you'd like.
I don't, we did already, so I think we're all right. Is there anyone that has any further comments at all on this one? Seeing none, then I will go to a vote. All in favor of approving omnibus amendment A, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that one is approved. Number B, Julia?
I move to adjust legal Wisconsin municipality dues to actual.
Oh, did I hear a second? Second by Randy, all right. Any comments by anyone on this one?
No.
Seeing none. All in favor of omnibus amendment B, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that is approved. Next one, Julia?
Is I moved approval of, to adjust debt service amount for 2020 proposed issuance.
Second.
Seconded, aye. I missed that one. Is that Gabriella, I think? All right, any further comments on this one? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that one's approved. Next?
I move approve, to I move to adjust for refuse on recycling rate approval resolution if different.
And is there a second? Second by Tom. Any comments on this one?
So, yeah, I have a question, so.
Okay, go ahead. Yep, go ahead. You are.
Okay, so how do we know when the rate is gonna be different, Misty?
If I may, Erin?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I actually didn't watch the beginning of the council meeting, but I believe it was on your docket for earlier in the meeting. So if it was approved as proposed, then this amendment is not necessary, and if needed, is not applicable.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
It did get approved, so do we actually withdraw this then, Misty? Or do you still approve it?
Just approve it, it's easier, if that's okay.
Okay, and I think I know that Julia had asked for a roll call.
Yeah, so no, because I, I thought it was something different, you know, I mean, that we need to change the rate, yeah, okay.
All right, all in favor of approving omnibus amendment D, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that one's approved. Next one?
I move to approve the, to adjust library levy for actual CPI used in ERP calculation.
Second.
Signed by Sarah. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that one's approved. One more, Julia?
I move to adjust for a transfer out of fund balance ERP strategy.
Second.
Saying by Shannon, I think, maybe? All right, any comments, questions on this one? Oh, it's Misty.
I'd just like to make sure it's clear that my intention is that you will give me the flexibility to do this amendment as needed, based on the intention of the amendment, once we get through and have an adopted budget. So we don't know the exact dollar amount now, but I will calculate that.
All right, anything else? All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, so before we have Gabriella do amendment one here, I'll have whoever did the amendment make the motion. We'll get a second, and then I'll give whoever submitted the amendment the option of speaking. You don't have to, but I'll give you that option, and then from there, I'll just call on whoever raises their hand, so. All right, do you want to do the first one here, Gabriella?
I sure do. Thank you. I move to approve amendment one, reduce unleaded and diesel gasoline price assumptions.
Second.
Signed by Randy. Do you, would you like to speak to this now, Gabriella?
I would, yes.
Go ahead.
So a couple of things. We have, in my opinion, we've over budgeted for gas for the coming year, based on historical data. This proposes a 12-cent reduction in the price assumptions for both unleaded and diesel. And I do believe that there's still plenty of room for prices to rise. For example, with this 12-cent drop, that yields a new estimated price of $2.59 for unleaded gas, which is still 80 cents higher than what it currently is at the pumps, which is $1.79. Historically, this new price assumption is still higher than the actual gas price averages we paid going back to 2016. And even with this reduction, we will almost certainly still be under budget, leaving a sort of pseudo contingency, as the mayor said, suggested that he wanted. A reduction in the price assumptions allows us to use those savings to improve our parks and public trees through the hiring of a horticulturist. Thank you.
All right, I do not see anyone else. Oh, Tom?
Misty, I just got some questions for you, and referenced in some other ones, too, but this one here, this covers seven departments roughly. And I know that we could just go to the gas pump on fish after your order, you go to gas and get gas, any pump. But is this gonna set our departments back as far as fuel consumption?
Misty, you want, go ahead.
Absolutely. So the number of gallons is assumed to be the same under Gabriella's amendment. It's just the price per gallon that she's suggesting changing. So the only way that it could affect the consumption would be if the price goes up a lot more than what we expect it to. Then obviously, the number of gallons we could purchase with that same dollar amount would be reduced.
Thank you.
I want, oh, just.
So this will be a good lesson right here, is if you ask questions, ask all your questions. Because once you stop and someone else answers, then your first turn speaking is over. So would you like to use your second turn to speak, Tom?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Misty, has the city, or Pat, has the city ever looked at, we get these fuel tanks, and I'm reading through this whole budget, where we don't take the full tank? Have we ever looked like at Oregon or Verona to help us out with the tank so we could get gas cheaper?
Are you done? Was your speaking? All right. Misty or Pat, would one of you like to answer?
Answer that one. So we have looked at doing that in the past. Even if you combine all of our combined usage, we still can't take a full tanker. And there was still a trip charge. So it is something that we've looked at, but it hasn't been practical yet.
All right, I do not see any other hands. So seeing nothing, then we can go to a roll call vote. Tracy?
I am here. Alder Radafra.
Yes.
Alder Clouter.
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt.
Yes.
Alder Crowsey.
Yes.
Alder Maldonado.
Yes.
Alder Schroder.
Yes.
Alder Strassman.
Yes.
Alder Udell.
Yes.
Motion carried, eight.
Excellent, thank you. All right, Gabriella, number two?
I. I make a motion to approve amendment number two, remove building inspection vehicle use reimbursement.
Second.
Saying by Randy. Would you like to speak to this again?
Yes, I would.
All right, go ahead.
So the, the building inspection department actually purchased a third vehicle recently for the employee that was previously using their personal vehicle. So there are now three vehicles for three employees, and I don't believe this reimbursement is no longer needed, but just why it's being removed. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Seeing nothing. We'll still do a roll call, even though I think I know the results. Go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Radafra.
Yes.
Alder Clouter.
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt.
Yes.
Alder Crowsey.
Yes.
Alder Maldonado.
Yes.
Alder Schroder.
Yes.
Alder Strassman.
Yes.
Alder Udell.
Yes.
Motion carried, eight.
All right, excellent. All right, number three, Joe, go ahead.
Gabriella, can I go first?
Number three is your amendment.
I, I'm kind of doing what you said, not speaking first.
You still need to do the emotional. You still need to make a motion to approve it. That's not one of your.
I move to amend, to adopt amendment number three.
And then just read the reduced.
Reduced public works equipment replacement.
All right, is there a second?
V I P 3101.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Gabriella. And Joe, you said you don't want to speak right away, so Gabriella, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to move to amend this amendment to increase the levy decrease to $30,000. I hope that makes sense.
Okay, so you want to make it, instead of 10, so hold on, so that, just want to make it clear, instead of $10,000, you wanted to make it even more, you want to make it $30,000. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Joe, all right. Gabriella, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So the reason I have identified this, based on the comments from our finance director, she indicated that if this passes, the staff will decide which piece of equipment would be delayed as a result of this passing. Based on, you know, looking at that, that documentation that follows the amendment document, it shows that the vast majority of things that are being purchased in '21 are new trucks for different parts of public works and parks. Those are all in at around a $30,000 range. So I think reducing, or increasing the reduction to be $30,000 matches what would potentially be a delayed vehicle. And then that allows us to vote down the ones that are very specifically identified as structural deficits for, for these other amendments that affect replacement funds. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else. Oh, Sarah, go ahead.
I'll just say, from my opinion, I know within our committee of the whole meeting, we did discuss, though, as to how these trucks and these repairs do specifically allow public works to respond to snowstorm events, repair water main breaks, and eliminate our need to rely on other outside resources. So I will say that I think that just cutting this area so that we don't have a structural deficit, I think, is valuable. Because structural deficits are definitely something we try to avoid at all costs. But by increasing this, there still is a cost to the city and to the residents that will be impacted.
All right, thank you. All right, I do not see, oh, Randy, go ahead.
I'm going to echo Sarah's words as well, but I, I think I've expressed my, my concern at the council, the whole, the discussion. Replacement funds demonstrate and foster stability, sustainability, financial responsibility, and long-term planning. We are not, by stealing from these funds, we are defeating the purpose of a stable financial community. And this is a, anybody that's familiar with accounting, this is the best practice. And it's according to the GFOA, that's Government Finance Officers Association. In good conscience, I cannot steal from the replacement funds. And that's all I have to say for the moment. Thank you.
All right, Gabriella, go ahead.
So I'd just like to make the point for the vehicle replacements that are listed as being purchased in 2021, they're not purchases. They're replacements of vehicles that exist. So we won't be losing a vehicle in service. It would just be delaying the purchase of a new vehicle to replace it. And then also, I just would like to make the point that we are in a tight budget because revenue has decreased due to the pandemic. That won't last forever, so I do fully believe that we can replace these funds at a later date when, when it's needed. And, you know, overall, I think that exchanging a vehicle, you know, making the sacrifice of delaying a purchase of a, of a new vehicle for. for community projects, for example, is a really very reasonable compromise to make. And I think I urge a yes vote.
All right, anyone else?
I will, I will go. So, you know, echoing Alder Gerhardt's point, I would not characterize this as stealing. I would also say that, you know, again, when we think about the investments that we're going to make, future investments, you know, this is meant to put forward an investment in humans. We invest in things, but, you know, it's also important that we invest in human beings. And, you know, this is a part of a study that is going to occur, but is not going to be an ongoing cost apart from the following year. So, I just want to, you know, plead that to the, not only to the council, to the public, that, you know, this is, this is an investment in our youth, just as the replacement funds are an investment in our vehicles.
Mayor, we're at five minutes, and in the future, I'll interrupt the speaker, but I didn't want to do that the first time without acknowledging that.
Yeah, and I will say, if you're speaking and we hit the five minutes, we have to interrupt you, you can continue speaking as it's still your turn, once we, if we do extend it. So, just so if anyone's concerned about that, that will be the case. So, it's if anyone wants to extend five minutes, we can do that. Otherwise, we will vote. All right, not hearing anything. Let's go right to a vote then.
Okay, so this is a roll call on the amendment?
The amendment, yeah. So, this first part is changing the amount from $10,000 to $30,000.
Alder Radafra.
Yes.
Alder Clouter.
No.
Alder Gerhardt.
Yes.
Alder Crowsey.
Yes.
Alder Maldonado.
Yes.
Alder Schroder.
No.
Alder Strassman.
No.
Alder Udell.
No.
You have a tie vote, four for.
I will also say no. Okay, so we're back to the main motion, which is $10,000 to reduce the public works equipment. Any further comments on this one? Seeing none, then we can do a roll call vote on the entire motion, if you will.
Alder Radafra.
Yes.
Alder Clouter.
No.
Alder Gerhardt.
Yes.
Alder Crowsey.
Yes.
Alder Maldonado.
Yes.
Alder Schroder.
No.
Alder Strassman.
No.
Alder Udell.
No.
Tie vote, four for.
Then I will also say no.
Motion failed.
All right, then going on to number four. Joe, if you want to do the motion for that?
I move to adopt amendment number four, reducing the plow fleet replacement fund.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gabriella. Joe, would you like to speak to this now?
Yes, I would actually like to pull the amendment, so I'm gonna vote to pull this amendment from the set of amendments.
Misty or Valerie, if someone's gonna pull an amendment, would they just say that and not do a motion at the beginning? And you can pull at any time, that's fine that you made a motion then pull it. Because I know that some people are gonna pull some other ones, I think, in the future. So, could one of you just kind of speak to, if you're gonna pull your amendment, the best way to do that?
They should do that first.
Yeah, so you don't need to make a motion to approve. You could just pull the amendment, essentially?
That's correct.
Okay. It's okay that you did. You can still pull your amendment, that's fine. But, okay, so what I'm hearing, Joe, is that you're pulling number four?
Correct.
All right, then we will move on to number five.
I make a motion to approve amendment number five, reduce the bike roundabout repair project. And just for clarification, if I want to make an amendment to that amendment, do I do it now, or do I wait until it's seconded?
Yeah, wait for a second.
Okay.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dorothy, and then it sounds like, Joe, you'd like to speak.
Yeah, I would like to make an amendment to this amendment to increase the cost to 20,000, more so because I'm pulling amendments and I want to.
I gotta get a second first. Sorry, Joe. I gotta get a second first.
Okay.
Is there a second? Seconded by Gabriella, and then it sounds like you'd like to speak to your amendment of the amendment. So, go ahead.
Sure. I know this is a joint project that's going to be, you know, funded through several entities, but because we're sort of unsure of what the cost is going to be, I would just vote to increase that cost. And if that would, you know, delay the project, I, you know, would support that. But, you know, it's possible that the project could come in at a lower cost than, you know, it may have been. This is to remind you an amendment to, that would be cross-funded between the county and the city of Madison for the roundabout near the Capitol, to the Cannonball Bike Trail. And, you know, while I bike regularly past this area, I am, you know, okay with making that delay. And I believe that there are notes included in this amendment from the public works director.
All right, anyone else that would like to speak to this amendment to the amendment? Julia, and then Gabriella after that.
I have a question. When is, when is this process gonna be built?
I just want to make sure that you. Are you done speaking? I want to make sure you.
Yeah.
Okay, is that Misty or Pat, do you know the answer to that?
It's in the.
I believe it's in '21. Bill is on.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Just read the report.
Bill, it's next year, isn't it, at this point?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so it's next year is the, is when it's planned at this point in time. Gabriella, go ahead.
Misty, I was hoping you could comment. My understanding, based on our conversation from committee of the whole, was that this is not a replacement fund. This is something distinct from those that we've been talking about in other amendments. So, could you clarify that?
Go ahead, Misty.
Yes, this is a specific project. It is not a replacement fund. And I would say it's a project that we currently have a contract with the other participating entities.
Julia, does see that you want to use your second turn speaking?
Yeah, so I, I want to know if we already have a contract or, you know, signed with the other municipality. And if we remove 20,000, how is it gonna affect, how is it gonna delay that project or, you know, or what are the, you know, the real consequences?
Misty, do you want to expand on that?
That I am not familiar with. So, I'm looking at the staff memo.
Bill, do you want to speak to that?
It's been there.
Yep.
Yep, I'm here. The, we have a memorandum of understanding with the other three entities or other two entities for the design of the project. We're going to have to find out what those costs are prior to bidding the construction out and how that's going to be split up.
All right. Anyone else on this? Sarah, go ahead.
I guess as I'm reading this, the budget that this is affiliated with, it sounds as though the funds were definitely intended to go towards stormwater management and that by decreasing the funds, we would potentially pull away from pulverizing and being able to manage stormwater, which within our city, I think is a common topic and a common concern. And so, I think that that definitely raises a red flag for me.
I believe, Julia, you're out of turn speaking. Valerie, do you want to confirm that?
Five minutes, here.
Oh, we're at five minutes as well. Okay, so we can either make a motion to extend the discussion, or we can vote. Not hearing a motion to extend discussion. So, this first vote is the amendment to the amendment, so making the dollar amount $20,000 instead. So, this is increasing the amount that we're taking out of the project to $20,000. Go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Radafra.
Ah, no.
Alder Clouter.
No.
Alder Gerhardt.
Yes.
Alder Crowsey.
I have to say no also.
Alder Maldonado.
Yes.
Alder Schroder.
No.
Alder Strassman.
No.
Alder Udell.
It's no, sorry.
Six to two, motion failed.
All right, so we're back to the original motion, which is $10,000. Any further discussion?
No further discussion.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry, we're at the five minutes limit. Sorry, thank you. All right. Then, if there's no extension, then go ahead, Tracy, on the original amendment.
Alder Radafra.
No.
Alder Clouter.
No.
Alder Gerhardt.
Yes.
Alder Crowsey.
Yes.
Alder Maldonado.
Yes.
Alder Schroder.
No.
Alder Strassman.
No.
Alder Udell.
No.
Five to three, motion failed.
All right, then we will go on to number six. Joe, will you make a motion?
Point of order, is it point of order?
Yeah, go ahead. What's your question?
I'm curious if somebody, if either Aaron or Pat, if you could just say when you're starting the clock so that I can time it on my own and keep track of it. Is that, I don't know if that's possible, but if it is, could we do that?
I, I can definitely do that. I'm starting the clock when the motion's being made by the Alder.
Would it be all right, would it help if Pat, like, give a thumbs up or something like that when he's starting the clock, so you can see visually?
That would be.
I can do that.
Great. All right, sorry. Go ahead, Joe.
I move to adopt amendment number six, reduce parking lot resurfacing.
Is there a second?
Hey, go on.
Seconded by Julia. Joe, would you like to speak to this? All right, then Gabriella, go ahead.
I move to amend this amendment to increase the amount to $30,000. I think that.
Hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second. Not hearing.
Hey, go on.
Oh, second by Julia, and it sounds like you'd like to speak to it. Go ahead.
Yes. So, based on our public works director memo, he says that if we are having to delay this project for resurfacing parking lots, we will have to do some repairs, and the equipment that he'll need will cost about $2,500. My understanding that tentatively, we have about $2,500 left in the contingency for 2020. And I'd be happy to sponsor amendment with just that equipment so that we can do repairs on the parking lots that were, has scheduled to do repairs next year so that we can delay it a little bit longer and reinvest this money somewhere else.
Anyone else? Sarah, go ahead.
The only thing I would call out is that, as we talked about within the committee of the whole meeting, Bill Bogie did state that this is going to have a ripple effect where, once we start delaying projects, it starts delaying future projects, and just the overall quality of the city and the parking lots become a safety and just an overall appearance concern. So, understood that it can just impact things for a couple of years for maintaining, but it does, as Bill called out, have a ripple effect.
All right, I have Julia next.
Yeah, so I want to ask a question to Bill because I am looking at the map that is in the package. And I want to, I want to know what is, what we are gonna do in '21 because I don't see anything in the map. So, and I think that, you know, taking 20, $30,000 for the lot resurfacing, I don't think that, you know, I don't think the condition of our lot in the city hall area on the campus are so bad that we need to replace it like right away. So, and I think that, for me in this case, it's priority to fund other amendment, and I need to find where I can. I think taking money from this fund is not gonna have so drastic consequence like from the other one that we just passed. So, I want to know from Bill, where is, in the map, I don't see the 2021 project or they're missing.
We, we don't do the projects every year. This is an ongoing maintenance or contribution that is made to the fund every, every year. We build, we build it up till we get enough to do a project. So, the next project would be in 2022.
All right, Julia, for your second turn. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think that we can replenish this fund eventually in a couple of years. If we, you know, we have more room in the budget, we can put this back, this 30,000, this, yeah, $30,000 to this fund. So, we have done it in the past in other, you know, this is my sixth budget, and we have done it in the past.
All right, I don't see anyone else right now. So, seeing nothing else, first, we have to vote on changing it to $30,000 instead of $10,000. So, this would be increasing the amount that we are taking out to $30,000. Tracy, go ahead.
Alder Radafra.
Yes.
Alder Clouter.
No.
Alder Gerhardt.
Yes.
Alder Crowsey.
Yes.
Alder Maldonado.
Yes.
Alder Schroder.
No.
Alder Strassman.
No.
Alder Udell.
No.
Tie vote, four for.
No. All right, so we're back to the original motion of $10,000. Anything further? Seeing nothing else, then go ahead, Tracy, on this roll call.
Alder Radafra.
Yes.
Alder Clouter.
No.
Alder Gerhardt.
Yes.
Alder Crowsey.
Yes.
Alder Maldonado.
Yes.
Alder Schroder.
No.
Alder Strassman.
No.
Alder Udell.
No.
Tie vote, four for.
No. All right, going on to number eight, Joe.
I think we missed seven.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, seven, sorry. Yep, seven.
I move to adopt amendment number seven, reduce the city campus building systems replacement.
All right, is there a second? Waiting for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Dorothy. Would you like to speak to it, Joe?
Sure. You know, I understand, you know, again, the concerns that folks have. I'm trying to look for as many creative ways as possible to be able to do this without, you know, making a major impact on the city, either financially or in terms of services. The, you know, different amendments to the amendments introduced for an attempt to do that. You know, I, I still plan to introduce amendments 15 and 16. However, you know, in order to do that and not cut into the multiple competing projects in the tax levy, which I would love to support most of them, I'm, you know, introducing sort of small ways that we can try to secure up some funding, again, for an important investment in people. I understand everybody's vote and I respect it, but, you know, again, I'm just letting you all know sort of where, where I'm coming from. You know, what I'm trying to do, it's not in the spirit of stealing or of taking away or making us less financially secure. It's ways to be able to find small sacrifices to be able to do something that's an investment in human beings.
All right, anyone else? Dorothy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna reinforce, Joe. We've had a lot of years now where we've had a lot of kids getting in some pretty serious trouble. And we have had residents up and down the scale saying, we gotta do something about these kids. This is what we need to do for our kids. This, this year is hard on all of us. Everybody's having a harder time.
Everybody's having a harder time. The kids that were already struggling are having an even worse, harder time than normal kids. I don't think there's anything that's normal this year. Um, but the, this is a year that we really should work at overextending ourselves to do what we need to do to help these kids and to satisfy our citizens' safety concerns. Um, the, the whole teen center thing is geared around stopping as much as we can of the safety concerns of residents by helping to redirect kids into better pathways. Um, and to keep saying, no, 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 eventually, we're going to have to answer to the citizens why we're not willing to address their safety concerns. And if we have to make a few holes in other areas to be able to do that, we really ought to do that.
All right, anyone else? Seeing no one else, then Tracy can go ahead with her roll call vote.
Alder Rodafrada?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Tie vote?
I'll also say no. All right, now we're on number eight. Sorry, go ahead, Joe.
I, um, make a motion to adopt amendment number eight, um, reduce the police fleet vehicle replacement fund, um, by $10,000.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dorothy, would you like to speak to this, Joe?
Absolutely. Um, I would like to say that, uh, following up on Alder Crowsey's comments in the last, um, amendment, um, and also bringing up, um, Chief Brecklin's, um, remarks that, uh, he did mention that while multiple years would not be, um, ideal, that, um, the department would be able to manage, um, you know, one-year reduction and, um, turn out okay, that the replacement fund is new for them and that, um, you know, while they're still trying to figure everything out, um, that he would be able to, um, his department would be able to make that sacrifice. Um, I've worked with Chief Brecklin on many issues, um, not just in my district, but in other districts as well. Um, I have a great deal of respect for, um, him and his department and what they do. And, um, I would say that, you know, he also, um, like me, wants to be able to see options for, um, young people in our community. His, uh, I, I think he brought it up in a committee of the whole meeting a few months ago, that, that this, uh, neighborhood was actually the first neighborhood that he worked in as a beat cop. Um, and, you know, I would definitely, um, lean on, um, the support of, uh, the members of Pittsburgh PD, um, were we to move forward, uh, in this project. I, I know that, um, his department has relationships with, um, families in the area as well as, um, uh, Lieutenant Hartwick, um, and some of the other officers on the force. So, um, you know, I wanna urge the council, um, to consider this amendment in the understanding that, um, I would be seeking fundraising to be able to move forward with this, um, project as well to supplement these costs. Um, and I will make a commitment to not, um, you know, make these cuts for 2022 and only keep them in 2021, um, to be able to help offset, um, the costs of amendment number 16. So again, I urge, uh, my council members to, you know, consider this amendment and, um, you know, consider making a small, um, uh, reduction in order to invest in something really big that, you know, in the committee of the whole meeting, um, most of you said that the engagement study was, was an important thing to, um, take on before we, um, looked at purchasing a building.
Anyone else? Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question for you in reference to the CIP. I believe, um, you just correct me if I'm wrong, was, uh, $100,000 or there's money taken out of the police building the same way? Am I correct? Is, can you help me out with that? Reference to CIP?
Go ahead, Misty.
So, at the CIP time, there was a reduction in the borrowing amount for the police facility in order to pay or to make room for the borrowing for the teen center. Not sure if that's exactly what you're.
That's where, that's where I'm going. Wasn't it about $100,000?
No, it was 1.5 million, I think, wasn't it, Misty?
I thought it was 10 million, actually.
Oh, tell me, okay, tell me.
I lost, I lost some zeros in there. Oh, okay.
It's 10 million, yeah.
Okay.
That's, okay, that was reduced, right?
All right, Tom, are you speaking again?
Right.
Okay, this is your second turn now.
Just, I wanna make this clear to the public. And so you really understand what's going on here. For the teen center, we reduced the future police department by like 10 million, or a large number, and now we're reducing it by a squad car. It's very important for public safety to this community. I've heard from many, many people, many people, not to touch the police budget. Um, there is an Alder that did it, and he has a right to do that. He certainly does. I heard what the City of Madison did to their budget, they're studying tonight on the police side. It's terrible. And I would urge council members not to go there.
Uh, Joe, for your second turn, go ahead.
Sure, um, just to remind the public as well, um, of the CIP conversation, um, um, we, you know, when the, the initial police facility was 25 million, um, that would, I believe, cover.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Joe, uh, someone.
Um, make a motion to extend.
For five minutes. Seconded by Gabriella. Uh, uh, I got, voice vote, or I'm sorry, roll call. All in favor of Tracy, if you can do, all in favor of extending five minutes?
Alder Rodafrada?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Uh, yes.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Great, okay, sorry, go ahead, continue, Joe.
Sure. So, um, just a couple points. Um, number one, I, um, you know, when we voted to reduce the size of the, um, facility, um, by, and the amount by 10 million, it was to cover, um, two projects. Um, one would be the hub, the other would be the teen center. Um, the other thing to keep in mind for the council as well as the public is that, um, you know, just a few years before the CIP was, um, changed to increase the amount to 35 million, it was originally at 25 million. Um, the third thing to keep in mind is that, um, the increase in budget and the increase in size also correlates with, um, I believe, a 40-year sort of capacity limit. So, you know, we're talking about having a building, um, that would not be at capacity for another four decades. Um, and the, the accommodation that we're making here, um, you know, is not the cost of a squad car. I don't know any vehicles that, that cost $10,000. Um, it would be a reduction in the, you know, the vehicle replacement fund. Um, again, I'm, I wanna make it clear to the public that I am not, um, advocating for, um, defunding any positions, personnel, um, or any current projects, um, and that I am, um, you know, supportive of our, um, department and work very, um, closely as an Alder with, um, the department, including our chief. So, um, I just wanna make it crystal clear that this is not a shot at, uh, the department. This is a, um, investment in our youth, which, you know, would be mutually beneficial to, um, the, the department and any other sector of the justice system, such as the juvenile justice courts, um, the judges, um, the, um, um, Dade County Human Services, our schools, and any other entity that's involved in, um, um, youth justice. By investing in our young people, um, we are investing in public safety. We are investing on the front end, um, rather on the back end. And, uh, you know, this, this again, I, I don't wanna minimize, minimize the, um, i- impact of this reduction, but when you look at this reduction in comparison to, um, the amount that we spend as a city overall, um, it's, it's minimal. Um, and I, I want to echo earlier points from earlier amendments that, um, I believe as a city, that, um, we can regenerate these funds and put it back into that fund.
Uh, Gabriella?
I, I just wanna say how disappointed I am that we couldn't make some compromises to, um, in my mind, I thought if we delayed the replacement of one vehicle and delayed some parking lot repairs, we could fund something that's potentially transformational for the city and would long-term, uh, save, do a lot of good for the city through the, uh, and I was hoping that that would be spent on the engagement study so that we could do a, a great plan. Um, if it was a reasonable changes, I'm very disappointed that, that that council didn't agree. That being said, um, with this particular amendment, I unfortunately can't support it simply because, uh, I'm a big advocate for hybrid vehicle purchases for the police department, but, um, I did just wanna say that I thought this was a good effort of creative solutions to invest in our, uh, people. And, um, pretty disappointed to see that this is how it's turning out.
All right, anyone else? Seeing no one else, Tracy can do a roll call vote, please.
Alder Rodafrada?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
No.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Five, three, motion fail.
All right, thank you. On to number nine, Julia.
Okay, so I move to, um, to approve, uh, to reduce the fire fleet vehicle replacement fund, CIP number 2299.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gabriella. Julia, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, the, uh, this amendment is to reduce the fire fleet vehicle replacement project number 2299 in the amount of $22,228 for the 2022 year and increase it to, uh, the original amount in 2020. And I am doing this in order to fund the promotion for the, uh, in the fire department for the lieutenant, um, li- lieutenants. Because this one is, um, I, I believe that this, um, this is time to authorize this fire department to proceed with this promotion. Uh, they came back last year, the fire department at that moment found the money to fund this, uh, position last year budget. It failed, and then the money was kept in the 2020 budget. So, I think it was pretty unfair what we did to them last year. And so this is one of the reasons that I am bringing this, and I am trying to find in their own, um, budget where I can find this $22,000 that I need to fund this promotion. And, and I look at their own department, I look at the replacement fund, and I know that what I am doing is structural deficit, I know that. I am an accountant, I know what I am doing. But I really believe that we need to put this, uh, we need to fund this promotion. Um, and, and this is what I am doing this. If we approve this, um, and I will recommend you to approve this, I, we can fund, uh, the other amendment that is coming, um, the number, uh, I don't remember the number, is the number? Uh, what is the number? Oh, forgot. Is it, is the other reclassification of the three firefighters to promote to, to, for the promotion to lieutenant? I don't remember the number of it. So, and the other comment that I want to make is that, um, so there is not enough room under the, the levy limit to pay for all these budget amendments proposed by others. So we, the common council, we have to make very hard choices and decisions. And I know what I am doing right now, for some of you, they are gonna tell me how they are, how you're gonna, you know, I need to find the money. I found it in the own department. I talked to the chief, uh, so he know what I was doing. So, and since 2017, we have this promotion, uh, and I think it's time to do it in 2021. That's it.
All right, anyone else wanna speak to this one? Shannon, go ahead.
Um, I just have a quick question. So, um, this may be for Misty or, um, the chief. Um, how much if, if this were to be approved, how much every year would this be on our budget going forward?
Misty, do you, do you know the answer?
Assume that you mean the promotions, the cost of the promotions going forward. So the first year cost matches the amendment that we're talking about, the 22,000 to 28. Uh, that cost would increase each year going forward as there's, uh, different wage adjustments and changes in the benefits that are allowed. So I don't know exactly what that dollar amount will be, but it would increase as time goes on.
All right, uh, Julia, for the second time, go ahead.
But also, Sha- Shannon, what we need to understand that the city has, um, the fire department in the future will have opportunity to, to look for another streamlined revenues that we can, you know, uh, remember that we have the annexation of the town of Madison too is coming. Uh, and this one is gonna help to organize the department to have a one lieutenant per, per shift. And also, we can, they, um, if you notice in the package, there is a, uh, a document, a specific, uh, it is, it'sified, what are the other, uh, opportunity on, on, on obtaining other revenues to, to fund the, the, the fire department through their services?
Anyone else? Shannon, for the second time, go ahead.
So, um, Julia, just so I can, I'm understanding you correctly. So, if this goes through, there are, um, other ways, um, in the future where this will be budgeted that won't go through our budget like every year that we have to do now. So we'll be able to find revenue for the continuous of the raises and the things that they need going forward?
Um, she can't re-respond, she already used this two times. Sorry. All right, Joe, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I, um, I, I just, um, I wanna.
Oh, all right, someone wanna make a motion to extend?
I'm, I move to extend debate. Second.
Seconded by Sarah, uh, first by Gabriella. Um, Tracy, can you do a vote to amend for, or to extend for five minutes?
Alder Rodafrada?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, go ahead, Joe, sorry.
Yeah, all my ums and ahs help me back. So I will say that I support, um, this amendment, um, not off its own merits, but because of the other amendment that I'll be supporting. Um, I support the work of the fire chief and, um, you know, from talking to one of the speakers today, um, in organized labor, um, it's really important that our, um, our firefighters are supported, their work is supported. Uh, and with the expansion of the city, I think, uh, having higher levels of leadership is gonna be critical. So, I'm, um, I, I will be voting yes on this amendment.
All right, Sarah, go ahead.
I just will say that, I know, Julia, you called it out and appreciate you calling it out, but the fact that this is a structural deficit does, once again, just raise a red flag because if we're going to be a responsible city. flag because if we're going to be a responsible city and understanding as to how many implications that has within other areas, I just don't think it's a fiscally responsible decision.
All right, not seeing anyone else, no? All right, then we can go to a roll call vote on this one, please.
Alder Radifrata?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Frazee?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Type vote?
I'll also say no.
Motion fails.
All right, but I've already asked for a question.
Before future debate extend, could we start with a voice vote and then do a roll call if there's not clarity about whether or not the motion carried?
I will for the extending the meeting, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, number 10, Gabriella.
I move to approve amendment number 10, reinstate hybrid electric vehicle fund, CIP number 1042. Hey, go on.
Standing by Julia, would you like to speak to this, Gabriella? All right, go ahead.
I, so we heard three people testify live in support of this, and I want to make it very clear that this amendment has no financial impact to the budget. What this is, is it's a policy designed to allow our finance director to roll over any gas savings that happen over the course of 2021 that are left at the end, end of the year into this fund if three criteria are met. Number one, the actual amount spent on gasoline was less than the budget. Number two, the transfer does not cause the department to show an overall deficit. And number three, the transfer does not cause the city to show an overall deficit. So as, as far as I'm concerned, this has absolutely no risks to the city in terms of passing it. It's really just a, a statement that we care about this and we will fund it if, if the funds are available at the end of the year. I would like to make the point that we're saving a lot of money on gas right now, unusually so. And I believe that we should pay it forward to future years when gas will not be as cheap as, as it is now, and it'll become much more restrained in our budget. So if we purchase hybrid electric vehicles in the near future because of this fund, we will actually be saving money down the line, and this is about investment. One more thing, it does, it helps to achieve, achieve reduction of emissions, which meets our climate change goals and really gives the department heads freedom to make these purchases without having to go through council for a two-thirds budget vote or feeling like they have to up their budget during the budget process, which is a very difficult decision, eases, eases the burden on them. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Tom, go ahead.
Uh, Misty, I'm looking at your notes, and I'm also wondering if there are no gas savings, what kind of an answer do you have?
Tom, I just want to make sure, do you have other questions you want to get out now before she answers? Okay, you're good? All right, go ahead, Misty.
Well, if there is no gas savings in 2021, then the transfer would not happen. So it would only occur if those three criteria that Gabriella mentioned exist, which includes having the funding available.
Anyone else? Seeing none, then we can go to a vote then. Go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Radifrata?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Frazee?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, on to number 11, Gabriella.
I will move to pass amendment 11, increased stormwater vegetation management.
All right, is there a second?
Hey, go on.
Standing by Julia, would you like to speak to this, Gabriella?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead.
Planting native vegetation is really the purpose of putting money into this line item, and it's part of a stormwater facilities and a stormwater management technique. And the two things that has a positive impact are on, are controlling runoff and improving water quality, both of which are important aspects of the stormwater utility mission. Native plants do this because they have deeper and more extensive root systems, which results in greater infiltration, reduced erosion, and better pollutant filtering. I want to be clear that we do need consistent investment for each project for about five years in order for these native plants to get established. And so consistent investment is extremely important. For reference, developers that put these types of native plants in typically only are, are required to do three years of management, and then afterward, the city takes on that burden. And we really do need to continue that investment, otherwise we're wasting that opportunity. And according to a public works director from last meeting, he did share that this effort has not received a lot of attention in recent years, but our stormwater engineer, Claudia Guy, is actually developing a stormwater vegetation management plan this winter. We have over 93 ponds, and we didn't always invest in the maintenance, maintenance of the native vegetation, meaning we let, we let weeds take over and kill it, and we need to get them back on track. And we do need to, at some point, increase the budget to maintain the existing native environments and establish new ones. In terms of funding, this does not affect the property tax levy at all. It is paid through stormwater utility fees. For reference, the total budget for stormwater in this 2021 proposed budget is $1,434,024. If we add $40,000 as this amendment specifies in this budget, that represents only 2.7% of the total budget. So it's a very minimal increase, but it will yield like untold savings in the future by potentially reducing flooding events. We pay for it now through this, you know, method, or we pay for it later through having to deal with stormwater flooding events. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Tom, go ahead.
Misty, in reading your notes on this one, it says that, actually, I want to read it for the public, too. It says stormwater rates need to be evaluated after the budget is adopted to determine if a rate increase is required to meet the expenditure, the expenses. The Alder had a great pitch, but the fact of the matter is, is could the stormwater rate be increased if this passed?
Go ahead, Misty.
So the council ultimately would have to approve any rate increase as well, which would be done by a separate resolution. My guess, based on the budget changes that I'm seeing, is that the stormwater is spending more money lately because there's a lot of issues that it needs to address. And in order to fund those, the rates would need to increase. But I won't know the dollar amount or if that's even a true statement until after the, the budget is done.
Anyone else? Sarah, go ahead.
Um, it's called out as to how much maintenance the native vegetation does require when it's establishing its roots, which I do think that they provide just a, a lot of value and completely agree with that. However, within several of these amendments, we do call out, and I know within public comments today, we heard as to how parks really aren't receiving the staff or the time for the amount of parks we have within the city. So I guess I'm confused as to who would be dedicating the time to maintain these, these new plants when we're already strapped for staff to maintain our parks and our vegetation that currently exists. And I, I don't know, and I don't mean to call out one of your timeframes. I guess I just think it's unclear and just want to call. Notice that right now, our park staff is definitely strapped for time and that we have trees that need to be maintained, and that's called out as to how within a future amendment, that it's just, we have a lot of vegetation that needs, or needs work as it is.
All right, anyone else? Dorothy, go ahead.
Yeah, first I have a question for Misty, then a comment. Wanted to find-
All right, so we're at the-
I move to extend.
Move to send by Dorothy?
Second.
Send it by Joe. All in favor of extending five minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that's passed. Go ahead, Dorothy.
I wanted to ask Misty if this amount goes to the bottom line number that we have to meet tonight.
Go ahead, Misty.
It does not because it's funded by stormwater fees instead. That was the rate discussion we had a little bit earlier. The bottom line number that we're really, need to make sure we hit at the end of the night would be the levy limit amount, and that is a separate funding source.
Okay, so that makes a difference in how I feel about this. Thank you.
All right, so that was technically your second turn speaking. I don't think you care that much of them on this one. All right, Gabriella, it looks like you want to do your second turn speaking.
Yeah, just wanted to address a couple of things. So in response to Sarah's inquiry, is it okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, in response to Sarah's inquiry, in terms of who would maintain it, my understanding is that when we do the native vegetation seeding and maintenance, we actually hire contractors to do that because our staff won't have the capacity to do so, and that effort lasts four or five years. And then at that point, the native vegetation is rooted and the invasives won't destroy the system. So it's really like, it's a five-year project that's typically contracted out, and then at that point, it ends. After I'm done, Bill, I would love for you to hop in if you have anything additional to add to that. And then as for, you know, the cost of this and whether or not might increase the stormwater utility rates, I will just say that, again, this would represent 2.7% of the entire stormwater utility budget, so it's a relatively minimal increase. And I will also say that these types of projects, you can't do them at the back end once flooding problems already exist. You have to do them on the front end, and we won't know how, what effect it will have, but if we don't do these now, 10, 20, 50 years down the road, we're going to have to pay for studies to study how to fix the problem, and then we're going to pay for really expensive stormwater infrastructure to fix the problem. And instead, we could be investing in native vegetation now for a relatively minimal cost. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing no one, then we can do a roll call vote. Go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Radifrata?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Frazee?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, good. Uh, next up is number 12, Gabriella.
I move to approve amendment number 12, add Swan Creek Monitoring Station installation and first year monitoring.
Sarah, second?
Hey, go on.
Standing by Julia, would you like to speak to this, Gabriella?
I would, yes.
Go for it.
So we heard testimony from five individuals this evening in support of this. In addition, you got several emails, I'm sure you saw. And during the 10:13, you know, original budget hearing, we had, I think, over 35 people registering in support and several people speaking live. This is an incredibly important project, not just to Pittsburgh, but to actually the entire region, which I think hopefully is obvious at this point. Just a couple of notes, reiterating some of the things you've already heard. Swan Creek Watershed feeds into the Wobesa Wetlands, which is recognized as one of the region's highest quality wetlands. And the monitor was actually recommended by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, the United States Geological Survey, the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, and the UW-Madison Water Resources Management Experts. And we have a wide variety of stakeholders that have pledged to or considering actually ongoing monetary support for this project to help us out, also help with future grant funding requests and volunteer hours that will reduce the cost of operating the monitor. Those stakeholders include USGS, Town of Dunn, Lake Wobesa Conservation Association, Friends of Wobesa Wetlands, Clean Lakes Plains, Village McFarland, Yihara Wetlands Improvement Network, and there's probably others out there as well. In terms of funding, this does not affect the property tax levy at all. It is paid through stormwater utility fees. We already have about half the cost of this paid for through commitments, which will come after we put it in the budget. So that means that the cost is around $17,500 at this point, and it could actually go down and more than that. Again, for reference, the total budget for stormwater is $1,434,024. If we add around $18,000 to the budget, which this would be, it's 1.2% of the entire stormwater budget. So it's a relatively minimal increase. And also, a couple of final thoughts. We are growing rapidly as a city. We all know, you know, based on the net, we had 4.8% net new construction this year, and it's gonna, we're gonna continue to grow, and we have to do so responsibly. Part of the mission of the stormwater utility, which I think people don't always realize, is that it also is about controlling pollutants and suspended solids. So this is not just a nice-to-have, it's an obligation. The monitor, what the monitor does is it gives us data so we can figure out if what we're doing in the stormwater utility is working in that part. And the first step is to add it to this bud, to the budget, and we have to be the leaders on this because it won't start without us putting in the budget. And a lot of, a lot of our partners and people in the region are counting us to, to take this action, so I urge you to vote yes.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, we can go right to a vote, Tracy.
Alder Radifrata?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Yes.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Frazee? Do you use her?
No, she's just got her on mute.
Just momentarily, um, yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. All right, number 13, Gabriella.
I will withdraw amendment number 13.
All right, and then number 14.
I will withdraw amendment number 14.
All right, then on to number 15, Joe.
Yes, I moved to adopt amendment number 15, reinstate purchase of building for Fitchburg Teen Center.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Standing by Julia, would you like to speak to this, Joe?
Yes. So I would like to make an amendment to the amendment. Let me get my words right. I would like to include the budget amount for the building rental and revenue for donations and, trying to get it out. Essentially, what I, what I would like to do is ensure the, the commitment of the purchase to the building, but not until we have enough external funds to be able to cover any costs that would involve burdens on the tax levy, which I believe, and Misty, if you can correct me here, up to $115,000. So in other words, not, not make a commitment to the building until we have the funds to be able to cover those costs.
Okay, so if I understand, before someone seconds it, it's almost like you're adding a contingency that we wouldn't buy the building unless those funds of a little over $100,000 are met?
Correct.
Okay, Misty, why don't you go ahead?
So he is actually, I believe, wanting to amend the amendment to remove the property tax funding and instead show a revenue line for building rental revenue or donation. I'm not sure which one you intend. But then the pro, the project would only continue if that revenue source existed and was lined up.
Okay, okay. Is there a second?
Correct, so grant funding, donations, and rent.
Okay, is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second.
Standing by Dorothy. Misty, another question or a comment? Go ahead.
Yep, so I will need exact dollar amounts. So my suggestion would be to pick which one you think is going to be the most likely revenue source, and then when the different contracts come through council, we could do a budget amendment to move it to the right revenue account. But I will need an exact dollar amount.
Joe, do you have a exact dollar amount? Oh, you're on mute.
Can I pull the amendment up really quick? Give me a second.
Yep.
No, I'm cutting into my minutes right here.
Otherwise, I have it pretty easy if you want me to-
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you do that.
Yeah. So do you guys see the amendment? So when you guys see the amendment, so this is the second page. That's the first page, this is the second page, where it has the $0 amount right now for building rental revenue. That would become $118,914. And then this $10,000 would be removed, and this $108,914 would be removed to remove the levy impact. Joe, you could put it to grant revenue or something instead. The one that just formed was the rent.
I will say, um, donation revenue.
Donation.
Okay, Misty, do you have what you need?
Yes.
All right, Joe, do you want to speak to your amended, meant of the amendment?
Um, yes. So I understand sort of the levy limit that we're up against. I still, you know, as you've heard the testimony from 43 people tonight and 60 in the past meetings, that this is a priority, it's something that's important, it's something that should happen. However, I'm putting into context the fact that we're, you know, at a specific economic reality that we legally can't go over and that we wouldn't have enough money to be able to commit to this, therefore, you know, it wouldn't pass. So what I am doing is giving, giving a good faith commitment to us to purchase that building in the future, but only when we have enough money to be able to maintain it.
All right, I have Julia next.
We're at 4:40, we're at 5 minutes, Mayor.
Oh, first we need a motion to extend five minutes.
So move.
Moved by Joe, moved by Julia, seconded by Joe. All in favor of extending five minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, we're extended five minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, so my question is in the, in the allocation of the how to generate the revenue, I think we need to increase, the idea, the idea to have this teen center and the community center in north part of Fish Hatchery is that we are going to have tenants, and the tenant are going to be, I want to pay rent, you know? So I think we need to, I see in your calculation, Joe, you need to determine that this is going to be some rental revenue coming from the building, you know? So you need to have an idea, you're going to have one or two tenants, how much you're going to charge. You're going to have, you know, usually I locate not only everything to distribu, to contribution and grants, but also percentage of that, you know, should be coming from rental income, so. Because the idea is this, you know, this is the idea behind this. We build the facility, but we rent it out, you know? And the tenant should be paying rent, should be paying utility, they should be paying, taking care of the maintenance of the building.
All right, anyone else? Dorothy, go ahead, and then I have Sarah after that.
Yeah, I've got, um, at least a Misty question, looking at the numbers, and then a Joe question. Looking at the numbers, what would be the, a monthly rent target that we would want? And then to Joe, reading the letter of support and having talked with or in, in relation to the owners and their feelings about the building, I presume that they would be willing to write a lease for a period of time while we're getting organized. So first, Misty answer, and then if Joe could answer, and then if I can, I'd like to comment further.
Well, hold on. So I don't know that Joe has another opportunity to speak, and if you comment again, that will be your second turn, which is fine. But Valerie, can you confirm that Joe's out of attempts or chances to speak on this one?
I apologize, I only have him down as one turn.
Oh, it's just one. Okay, sorry. All right, Misty, go ahead.
So the, the upfront cost would be the $108, $118,000 we, I mentioned before. As far as a target for a rent amount, I assume that you would look at what the ongoing cost would be, which is on page 93 of the council amendment packet, in kind of that middle column, at $61,907. So if you divide that by 12, you're at about $5,200 a month.
All right, and then Joe, I guess you do have a second turn to speak. You don't have to use it right now, but you can if you'd like to.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So, you know, the building has been on the market for a little while, but, and I've, I've had numerous conversations with the owner. The owner is very supportive of the purpose for which we're using the building. And I'm sure that if, as you heard Karen speak earlier during comments, Centro, you know, is a very large organization that, you know, serves many youth and adults throughout the county. And, you know, I think in this neighborhood particularly where there's a larger Latinx organ, presence, as well as a large number of African-American youth. You know, I, I'm, I, I would be surprised, while I haven't had a conversation with him, I would be surprised if the owner himself or the owners themselves would be unwilling to, you know, sort of rent out the space as well to organizations. So I think there's multiple ways we can sort of attack this. But I, I do think that it would be a good idea to continue our commitment to having a space on, you know, the Anton side of Verona Road, especially a building that, you know, has many features that are ideal for youth programming, that we keep that relationship going, and we continue a commitment to a teen center. And that this particular amendment, the way it's written or the way it's amended at this time, at this moment, would not cost us anything and would allow us to be able to both generate revenue and generate interest in the space before we actually move it. And to Julia's point, yes, I think it would be a good idea to, that once there is a permanent anchor tenant in the space or anchor tenants, yes, that is still the intention to be able to charge them rent so that we can generate revenue for the city.
Minutes.
All right, we are at 10 minutes, so that we have to end discussion. Sorry, anyone else that wanted to speak? So we are at 10 minutes, so that means we have to do the vote. Tracy?
I'm in order.
Yeah.
Are we not, we're, so I just want to clarify, we're not allowed to extend it beyond 10 minutes even if we vote for it?
I believe that that was the clarification earlier this year, but Misty, can you confirm?
So in the past, we have allowed additional five-minute extensions.
Oh, so it is there. Okay, I thought you said earlier that it was a maximum of 10.
I think Valerie.
Valerie?
Yes, if I may. So in our ordinance, we specify that each council member can speak twice on each amendment, that we, the majority can extend the debate to 10 minutes, and then furthermore, that a separate vote must be taken for each additional extension, so I think.
Oh, so you can do more. Oh, okay. Okay, good. I misunderstood that familiar. So yes, we can extend for another five minutes.
I move to accept debate.
Second.
Standing by Sarah, I think. All in favor of extending five more minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, we have five more minutes. Dorothy, did you want to speak again your second time?
I'll pass if there's others.
All right, I have Gabriella then.
Uh, I just want to say that I appreciate Alder Maldonado's flexibility in terms of, you know, changing the circumstances so that we can make this work given levy limits. I am a huge supporter of this project. I think it's, you know, what I was really struck by, we've heard a lot of testimony. During the CIP, we, we sat for a long time and listened to testimony, and we got a lot of emails about it, and, you know, there's so many good reasons to do this. And one of the things I was struck by when we were listening to the people testify today is that this is such a unique project. There's no one else in Dane County that's looking at doing this. And I think Pittsburgh is a pretty extraordinary city in a lot of ways. You know, there's always ways to be better, but I think we do some pretty extraordinary things. And I think it sounds absolutely inspiring that we are doing something that is totally unique and is going to inspire other communities to support the youth. And I just, it just makes, it makes me so excited. And I think that because of how inspiring this project is, I think we're going to find tenants. I think we're going to find grant funding. I think the county's going to end up funding it as soon as they can make it work in their budget. And I think this could be a pretty extraordinary example for other cities. And I think in the long run, it's going to save us money and in lots of different ways, so I strongly support this.
Sarah, oh, and then Julia after that. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thanks. I just wanted to say that I do without a doubt support the idea of a teen center, can see the value of it to our community 100%, but I do think that it is something that we should consider as a responsibility, that we should be providing residents transparent and easy-to-follow communication. And I think the back and forth that this teen center has gone through of that, we were going to go through Little Johns, and we were confident that that was something that we could pursue. And now we're amending the amendment to potentially have some caveats to having this building. I do think that there's a risk in causing confusion to residents, and I think that that's something we should try to avoid and that there is value in following a process of, let's fund a plan and figure out what we should do and how we can make a best teen center. Get community involvement, hear their input, follow the process of implementing a big facility and a, a large project for the city so that it's followed correctly. Residents are clear on the process and informed and involved on what we are doing because I do think it's an exciting project. It would bring a lot of benefits to residents, and it's something we should do. But just even, as Joe said, from going from 60 to 43, even seeing a which that's a heck of a lot of people, that's awesome, and I think it's a great project. But I fear we're causing confusion by not having a firm plan and following it.
Julia, go ahead.
Yes, I, I want to answer first to you, follow what you say, Sarah. I think what Joe is trying to do now is putting a break on this project, and then he's going to try to figure out, and he's going to start doing what all the things that you want him to do. He's going to start, you know, informing the public, he's going to start looking for grants, he's going to start looking for partners, so I think he's going to do that. He's putting a break in his project. I want to support this project because I was one of the co-sponsors in the CIP, and I believe that we need to invest in capital, in capital, in, 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 in youth. I am, I believe in the, in the power of the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative and program, and this is what we're trying to do. And, and I know, I, I know, and, and one of the things that I want to say to Joe is, this is a great idea and a plan, and sometimes this plan take a little bit longer. And, 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 you know, and I am very, you know, I, I know that the process is in the CIP, so this process is, we are going to do it. You know, maybe next year, maybe two year, three year, we are going to do it. We are committed to do it. But I think sometime, you know, this big project take a little bit time to develop and to see the light. I want to support it because I am telling the resident of Fitchburg that I believe that we need to invest in, in, in youth. We, this is a great project that we can work with the county to, to see they can collaborate with us and give some, and provide some funds. And I think that I will ask my fellow Alders, look outside the box. People move to municipality and city because of the amenities that they offer, okay? So let's make this city more vibrant. Let's build this facility. They build this, we are investing in youth.
Five minutes.
Eventually, we are going to have a return.
All right, sorry, we got.
Move to extend.
Move to extend by Dorothy, seconded by Gabriella. All in favor of extending five more minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, we got another five-minute extension. Sorry, Julia, did you have anything else to finish?
No, the last thing that I want to say, we are doing an investment in the community. Yes, there are costs, like always, but I think the return in this investment is going to be great. We are not going to see the, you know, we are going to see, you know, the, the success of this project maybe two, three year, you know? It's not going to come immediately, but we need to start investing.
Randy, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I think I've expressed in the, in the past that I, that I am in support of the project. It's just that I'm extremely frustrated at this point. It seems like we've been all over the board in every direction, up and down and back and forth. This is a huge risk, dollar-wise, not from the human side standpoint. There's no question about it, that a teen center is needed in this particular area. But I, but I have a hard time saying yes at the point of where we're at currently. I've expressed that we need to move forward in a similar way that the hub came around. This isn't going to happen overnight. No plan, no project does. Every project requires good planning. And I commend Joe all the work that you've done. However, I just think we need to take a step back and put a solid plan together, working with city staff and moving it forward.
Julia, do you want to use your another turn to speak?
Yes, I want to respond to Randy again what I said to Sarah. Joe is putting a break on this project, so to do all of that, Randy. He's going to do all of that. That's it.
Randy, you got a second turn. Go ahead.
I don't, I don't understand what a break is. I, 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 I don't know, maybe we've used up time. If somebody else can explain that. I don't, I don't follow what a break is. I've heard a lot of numbers here. And I'm sorry, it just, it almost sounds like confusion, chaos. And I know people operate that way. Maybe my simple mind doesn't handle it. I'm sorry. So I need a clarification on what a break is.
I have Gabriella next.
I want to clarify what I, what my understanding of the amended, the amended amendment is, is that we are, when, when, we are basically not going to purchase the building until we know we can cover the costs, the operating costs. So in the, it's going to go in the budget, but it's going to be on hold until we can cover those costs. So there's no going to be, there's not going to be an increase in the property tax levy because we, that will be covered. And if it doesn't get covered, we won't make the purchase. And so it's really like, there is very little risk because we'll put it in the budget, and if it does not, if it doesn't work out this year, it won't be purchased. So it's just an opportunity that, it, it's an opportunity to let us apply for funding. You know, it's kind of a similar thing to the Swan Creek Monitoring Station. Like, we have to show that we care about this and we're going to invest in it, and then people are going to come and, and say, yes, I want to, I want to be a part of this. But it's very difficult for people to, to get grant funding and to get county funding and get, get tenants unless they are pretty confident that we're actually going to move forward on the building. So I think this, this actually creates very little risk because we won't end up purchasing the building unless we work it out. And, and Alder Maldonado has made it clear that he's going to work quite hard on this. So that's my understanding of the amendment, and that's my understanding of, we vote for that amendment, and then when we vote for it, it's not going to automatically happen unless we can support it through funding, tenants, grants, et cetera. Thanks.
Valerie, does Julia have another chance to speak?
Uh, no, Alder Radifrada has used both of her turns, as has Alder Gerhardt, Alder Maldonado, and Alder Udell.
Thank you. All right, any of the remaining people want to speak? Dorothy, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a thought, and it kind of got lost. What I.
Dorothy, we're at 4:45.
Move to extend another five.
Second.
Seconded by Joe, I heard. All in favor of extending another five minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, five more minutes. Go ahead, Dorothy.
I really need to jot down notes as I'm thinking through things while I'm listening to others. We need, the, what I, what I was thinking of was that when Randy mentioned the hub, the hub is a multi-year project that a staff member chose. What I've been talking about up in our neighborhood had, for a lot of years now, has been a need and a need and a need and a need. And we did not pick our side to do a big project. We need a project. Just because there's another project in the works doesn't mean that we ought to ignore our end until that multi-year project is done. I think we're fully capable of putting together a halfway decent plan that we can, um, that will end up being successful. I at least know this neighborhood well enough to be very aware of the need that we have. And I can easily presume that it will be successful based on the need that we have and all of the organizations that have already spoken, support, pretty much saying that they will be using the building if it is available. So we, we, we just really need to do it. Otherwise, we're leaving this whole quarter of the population of the city of Pittsburgh kind of ignoring us again. And I'm, I'm more than disappointed. I'm, I'm tired of it. We need to do good stuff for this corner of the city, period. We got too many people that are struggling, having a really hard time. I've been talking to people in the Verona schools, some of the administrators, and they're saying that the kids that tend to struggle in school have just evaporated this year. We need to reconnect. And part of the discussions that Joe and I have both been involved in with the schools is how to get kids connected back into the educational system that have kinda dropped off the radar. This would be an opportunity to set up a little bit of mentoring, kind of whatever, whatever for this year yet, if we were able to start getting things together. The building is available now, wouldn't surprise me if the owner would say, yeah, you, you guys can have a key and do things a little less formally while we're getting organized. So I think we would be losing a really, 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 really excellent opportunity if we say, ah, we gotta, got so many other things we have to pay attention to. We can't afford to pay, pay attention to those people up in that north corner. We don't care. That's the wrong attitude.
All right, anyone else that has a turn left? All right, seeing none from
Amy, Amy had a comment.
Amy? I don't know who Amy is.
Mercer.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, hey, Amy. Amy's on.
Yeah, I, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Um, I just have a couple comments or thoughts.
Before we get started, we are close to five minutes.
All right.
Move to extend.
Second.
Moved by Joe, seconded by Dorothy. All in favor of extending another five minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, go ahead, Amy.
Okay, thanks. I didn't know if I can comment or not. And I think it's a great project and I'd love to see it happen. Some of my concerns are, one, the idea of purchasing the building right now. With the way the economy is, I'm anticipating that because of COVID, a lot of the commercial properties will actually decrease in value over the next year. And so if you were to wait on purchasing, you might actually find more properties for sale at a lower value. I'm also concerned with the, the idea of generating the income and the rental because I'm seeing, I'm, I'm anticipating that will probably go down because office space, restaurants, you know, they're hurting right now. And so it, it is a risk in my mind about the purchase at this point in time for this value. And then, to me, you're also taking money out of the budget by putting it like kind of in a holding pattern right now. You're designating it for something that might be higher than what you might need to do. Where you could use that money for the other projects, you know, like your, um, the other amended projects, the other items in your amendments. And so I, to me, I think it would be better to create an amendment or use your amendment to do your study for this year and then look at the following year's budget to purchase the building and have your plan all in place. And those are just my thoughts.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else. First, we have to vote on the amendment, which is to put in this contingency of 100, what is it, Misty, 100 something thousand dollars?
Yep, so we're removing all of the levy budgeted amounts and we are replacing them with the same dollar amounts but as a donation revenue.
Okay. All right, so, uh, roll call on the amendment, the amendment first. Tracy?
Alder Aratafada?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Gerhart?
Yes.
Alder Krause?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udel?
No.
Ty Boat?
I'll also say no. And so now we're back to the original motion for number 15. I think there's a couple people that can say something if they'd like to. I don't think they will, so go ahead, Tracy with the roll call.
Alder Aratafada?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Gerhart?
Yes.
Alder Krause?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udel?
No.
Ty Boat?
I'll also say no.
She feels.
All right, um, before we do this next one, it's 10:45 and we're gonna need to extend the meeting at least an hour. But if we wanna start with a motion to extend the meeting an hour by someone, that would be great.
Move to extend by an hour?
All right.
Second.
Gabriella and Sarah, all in favor of extending by an hour, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? Julia, do you have a question or point of order or something?
Yeah, can, can we have a five-minute break? I am, you know, I really need to go, to take something from my headache and I need to go from my office, so can we take?
You can make a motion for a five-minute recess. We're halfway through the amendments and we've been Hold on, hold on, we're halfway, I mean, I just, we'll find out, we're halfway through the amendments and we're three hours in, so. But yeah, go ahead and make a motion for a five-minute break.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to have a five-minute break.
Is there a second? Seconded by Joe, all in favor of taking a five-minute recess, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, uh, five-minute recess. So we are on number 16. Joe, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. I move to adopt budget amendment number 16, adding a community engagement study for the teen center, year one of two.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gabriella. Do you wanna speak to it, Joe?
Before I speak, I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment.
All right.
I would like to reduce the amount of the engagement study to, excuse me, I'll calculate. To, I'm sorry, just give me one second, y'all. Apologize. To, um, 25,000.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dorothy. All right, now would you like to speak to it more, Joe?
Sure, absolutely. So again, I'm making a response to, you know, Alders as well as the mayor that a, an engagement study, a robust engagement study should proceed moving forward on the cost of the building. You heard earlier Ms. Annette Miller speak. She is the CEO of Equity by Design. And she also sent an email to the Alder and Council about sort of what the sort of cost of engagement would get you and what specific things would be involved in it. And I know folks had questions about that at the last meeting. I would like to say that, you know, while we're at a very specific levy limit and all the reductions and amendments did not pass, I am making a, um, a, I don't know, call it sacrifice, but compromise to reduce the size of this funding study. I will also say, though this is not an official thing, if the council passes this, I will personally donate my entire Alder salary for 2021, the whopping amount of $5,000 to the cost of this study. And I will also commit to fundraising at least $10,000 to get this up to $40,000. I, I believe that it's important that we move forward on this now, that we at least make some sort of effort as a city to move forward and start collecting information. I will also say as a piece of context that I have had conversations with community partners. One of them sent a letter to you, which is UW Health. UW Health is working in collaboration with the committee that does the Dane County Youth Assessment. They do it every three years. And this coming year would actually be when they would start distributing those surveys that Mr. Nathan Beck had alluded to. So I think it would be a perfect time to really start doing some deep engagement with our young people. The other thing that I would like to add is as a part of, you know, an engagement study, there is some possibility that our young people can also, you know, be paid to participate. So this can also be an economic development opportunity for our young people. And as you've heard through, you know, our, our guests who have spoken as well as some of our Alders who have passionately advocated for it, during these times of COVID, young people not only need engagement, but their families often need some sort of a support as well. So I think by moving forward in this study in some sort of way, even if it's not the amount that we initially sort of proposed to do it, we would be making some sort of progress now to the items that, you know, several of the Alders had issues with about process. I think it's important that we start that process, that we have a deep process and that we have a broad process. And I think by really getting the voices of youth, not only are we engaging them and we're giving them something to do in a way to feel meaningful and a way to feel a part of their community, as well as their families, but we're also getting information that will help us make an informed decision as a council about this work moving forward. I strongly urge my fellow council members to support this revised amendment, the amendment to amendment 16 for a community engagement study for the teen center.
Joe, I do need to clarify the, which is maybe is what Misty was asking. So while your amendment, are you saying it's 25,000 in year one, like, but year two is still 50,000? Or is it $25,000, period, and there's nothing committed to next year?
Mayor, five minutes.
Oh, all right, we need to
Move to extend.
Second.
Moved by Joe, seconded by Gabriella, all in favor of extending by five minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. All right.
Would, would this be my second time speaking?
I don't, oh, it is, Valerie? Okay, nevermind.
Okay, then I'm, then I'll, I'll wait until others speak.
Uh, Misty, go ahead.
I'd like to ask if we can get a clarification on the motion though, because I need to know if it's $40,000 study funded 25,000 by levy and 15,000 by donation is how I am understanding it.
Valerie, can you speak to, can you clarify that without it being a second?
Not if that's what you intend.
Well, I think if an Alder's answering staff questions for purposes of making sure that we have a proper record and amendment that is comprehensible, I, I would say we wouldn't count that towards our turn.
Good, cuz I didn't think so either. Good, thank you.
I will say correct.
Okay.
Excellent. So it's a $40,000 study funded 25,000 by levy, 15,000 by donation is the amendment.
Yes.
And still $50,000 next year? Right, cuz the, the original thing was, this is year one of two, so it's 50,000 this year and 50,000. Well, the original was 50,000.
Does this count towards my speaking?
As long as it's yes or no, I think you're fine to clarify it.
I think it would involve a sort of more in-depth, go ahead, Misty.
I'm just, I'm just, so technically the council can't commit to 2022 at this point. So I, I think that doesn't necessarily matter as far as the amendment is concerned.
Okay, sorry. All right, thank you. All right. So who else would like to speak to this? If anyone, Tom, go ahead, Tom.
Point of order. I can't speak for the Alder, but we introduced this. But have we ever done anything like this that in the budget where an Alder raised $25,000 in reference to a study? Can that go in a budget like that where the Alder raises the money for the study? If he doesn't raise it within a year, it goes away? Is there anything like that that you've seen?
Do you have any other questions that you wanna say before she speaks?
That's really my only question right now.
Okay, go ahead, Misty.
A couple of things. So one, we haven't done something similar in my experience for our study, but we have for other projects. For example, the inclusive playground was one that we said we would commit an amount to as long as there was matching donations for it. As far as the, it going away the next year though, so how that process would work is if, for whatever reason, it, it wasn't funded by donations in 2021, the levy amount would be included on the carryover request for 2022. And council at that point could choose whether or not they wanted to continue that project as an option in 2022 or not.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
So basically, we wouldn't be able to begin the study until the $15,000 was committed by the Alder. That's correct, Misty?
Correct. So we couldn't sign a contract until we had the money in hand. So we could sign a $25,000 contract. If we don't think the donations are likely, council could, not staff, of course. Or if you wanted to sign a $40,000 contract, we would have to have the donations in hand to make sure that we could pay that contract.
Correct, yeah.
Julia, go ahead.
I, I want some clarification about that one is a city policy?
Do you have anything else you wanna say before staff answers?
Yeah, like, yeah, it's like that we need to have the money, the $15,000 on hand before we sign the contract? Oh, that one is a policy or is a, is a recommendation from you, Misty?
So when I sign contracts, there's a line that says the provision to pay this contract has been met or something along those lines. So I wouldn't be able to sign a contract unless we actually have the money to pay it.
Neither would I.
All right, anyone else, all right, Giulio, for your second turn.
Hold on, Mayor, we're at four fifty.
Oh, first we had a new five-minute extension.
Motion accept.
Second.
All right, by Joe and Gabriella, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay, all right, we have another five-minute extension, okay, now go ahead, Giulio.
But the city will have the twenty thousand dollars that we allocate in the levy. You know what I mean, so I want to understand why we cannot start, that we cannot sign the contract because we already have twenty thousand dollars that we are, if we approve this tonight, we already have twenty thousand, what is twenty-five thousand dollars? You know what I mean, so we are approving, so we have twenty-five allocated to the project. Why we cannot sign the contract if we don't have the fifteen thousand from donation, I don't, I don't get that.
Well, if it's a forty thousand dollar contract, we don't have the forty thousand, we would only have twenty-five thousand of that. So we couldn't commit to forty thousand.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Gabriella, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, you know, in all these conversations about the teen center, uh, I'm disappointed that the teen center didn't pass. However, I think you all made quite convincing comments about why a study is necessary, um, and why it's a good first step. And so I hope that there's a lot of more support for this than buying the building, um, especially given Alder Maldonado's very generous, uh, commitment to donating his alder salary. I will say that I will definitely donate to this ten thousand dollar fund that we'll need to fundraise. Um, I have to talk to my husband about how much, but I will be doing so. Uh, I think that this is, this is an amazing first step and I, we, we can do something extraordinary here. And I think you all made arguments about why it's important to start with this. So, you know, take those words that you said and take it to heart and vote yes, I strongly encourage it.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing nothing else, uh, first we have the amendment to the amendment, which is to change it to forty thousand dollars total, twenty-five of that would be from the city and fifteen would be through donations. All right, so that's kind of the first thing is changing it to the forty thousand dollars for next year. Tracy, can you do a roll call?
Alder Radafrada?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Gerhart?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroeder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carried, five three.
All right, so now we're to the, I guess, main motion, if you will, as amended now to forty thousand dollars instead of fifty thousand dollars, twenty-five of those from the city. Any further comments before we vote on the overall motion? All right, seen none, Tracy, go ahead.
Alder Radafrada?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Gerhart?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroeder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carried, five three.
All right, on to number seventeen, Tom, this is yours.
Thank you, number seventeen was add a part-time code enforcement inspector, um, I'll withdraw.
All right, uh, Giulio, number eighteen. You're muted, Giulio, we can't hear you.
I move approval to add the reclassification of the three full-time firefighters to lieutenants.
Sir, second?
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, would you like to speak to this now, Giulio?
Yeah, I think we discussed a lot in the committee of the hall and in my previous amendment and, um, this is now, I want to specify that we are now, um, creating new position, so we are doing a reclassification. Um, so, um, and this will allow the fire department to proceed with the lieutenant promotion that they were approved in twenty-seventeen. And this proposal does not change the total number of staff position in the fire department.
All right, anyone else? I guess I'll just, I'm gonna use one turn to speak just to clarify. The previous positions for lieutenants were paid-on-call lieutenants and so that it's not quite apples-to-apples, so I just want to make that clarification. The previous lieutenant positions were not full-time firefighters, they were paid-on-call. There was a little bit of difference there, but, you know, whatever it is. All right, um, Giulio, you want to speak again and then I'll go to Dorothy.
I want to ask if the, is the chief want to make any comment?
Go ahead, chief.
Yes, I, so you're absolutely correct, these, uh, were paid-on-call positions, uh, instead of having, um, what amounted to twelve, uh, lieutenant positions, uh, we have, uh, reduced that. Right now we're at six, we're looking for nine, uh, total lieutenant positions. And, uh, it does address the, um, the, the overall, uh, trying to remember the, uh, the, the term just off the top of my head. It basically allows us to have, uh, appropriate reporting numbers. Uh, so basically, we're, we're trying to bring our leadership in line with what we see, uh, comparatively throughout the, the fire service. It allows for appropriate delegation and gives us the ability to, uh, provide appropriate, uh, supervision.
All right, thank you, Dorothy, go ahead.
I was just going to remind that, um, people voted down the amendment that it was intended to balance this. If you are gonna stick it one way, you need to stick it the other way, if we're gonna balance. I hate, I hate to do that, but that's the game that we're playing apparently. We're gonna say no tonight.
All right, anyone else? Uh, Giulio, go ahead.
Yeah, but there is a steel forty-seven thousand dollar on the table.
And I just want to mention that, um, Alder Radafrada has used all of his.
Oh, sorry, all right.
Sorry.
All right, anyone else, uh, Gabriella, go ahead.
I guess my impression, I just think that it seems clear to me that these types of leadership positions are necessary and my, my, I would imagine that there are people that are already serving in these roles just without being paid for it. Um, and I do think there is money left in, uh, in the limit, levy limit right now, but I will just also point out that we have the reconciliation process to fix those mistakes down the road. Uh, if it, we do go over and I think that this is a good project and I'm gonna vote for it. Um, and if we have to do reconciliation after, then we will do so.
Aye, all.
All right, anyone else? Seeing nothing else, then we can go into the vote, Tracy.
Alder Radafrada?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Gerhart?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
No.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroeder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Five three, motion failed.
All right, thank you, moving on to number nineteen, Randy.
Amendment nineteen, amendment nineteen, motion to move add pedestrian activated crossing caution lights at Seminole Highway.
All right, is there a second? Signed by Tom, would you like to speak to this, Randy?
Uh, yes, just as a, a number of other, uh, Seminole Forest, Pittsburgh residents have stepped up. Uh, this location is just adjacent to the Seminole, uh, Pool and Tennis Club. Uh, it is a, a crossing Seminole Highway, Schuman Drive. Um, if anybody's ever walked this particular, uh, crosswalk, you will find out very quickly how dangerous it is. Uh, traffic, uh, even though the speeds along Seminole have deep, have been reduced, uh, traffic continues to move, um, at a pretty good pace through. And, uh, there's a lot of activity crossing to get to the other side. Uh, there's a lot of things happening on the, uh, the, uh, I'm gonna say it's the, uh, the west side. Uh, you have the Hop House, uh, people are walking to that direction, I know. Uh, neighbors of mine have done that, uh, my, myself included. Uh, Bereks is over there, Pinnacle Health and so forth. There are a number of other, other reasons that people are crossing and I think it's very dangerous. And, uh, I believe the lights would, uh, correct that problem, correct the, uh, it's a public safety issue.
All right, anyone else? Uh, Dorothy, and then I have Giulia after that.
Yeah, I've got, um, two things, um, one is that I have been driving in a car uh, where, where there's a pedestrian activated light, um, they, they will hit the button and then while they're waiting for, they, they see a chance to jump across the road, but the light changes anyway. So I'm, have to wait at the light while nobody's there. Um, I guess for the, the yellow beacon lights, that's not as much of an issue as the red lights that frustrate me so greatly. Um, but you do end up potentially unnecessarily stopping traffic, um, I don't know. Um, my main question though, and I, I asked this in our first discussion, um, are there some interim steps that we can take rather than having to add electricity and everything to get lights and get, get the whole thing going? Can we, and I, I sent this question to Bill and he answered it today, um, can we add signage? Can we add more apparent paint to the crosswalk to make it far more obvious than it is now? Um, there, there's a lot of street signs that, that say state law requires yield of pedestrians or a stop for pedestrians, I don't know, I guess which the Wisconsin law is. Um, I think for this year, and what Bill said in that is that, uh, signage would be about two thousand dollars, repainting would be five to six thousand, and then he said that they could cover it in, uh, next year's budget without having to add those amounts to this budget. They, they could do that work next year without adding to the budget. What I would like to do is have him do that as a test for a year, see if that works out. If it does not, then we can talk about running electric and doing something more dramatic, uh, a year from now. Um, to add twenty-two thousand, whatever, to the budget, um, I don't think is entirely necessary, particularly for something that probably should have gone through CIP. So I, I would, can I, um, ask to amend it to take out all costs to put in, um, signage and repainting only, that would be absorbed by next year's budget?
You can make that motion if you'd like.
I think I will presume it to be made in that case.
All right, so the motion is to essentially make this zero dollars and instead of a light, it's painting and signage to be absorbed into the public works budget?
Yes.
Five, five minutes, Mayor.
Oh, all right, um.
Move to.
First, let's get a second and then I'll do the extension. So first, second I heard from Randy and then I also heard Joe do a move to extend five minutes. Is there a second to extend discussion five minutes?
Second.
Signed by Sarah, all right, all in favor of extending five minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay, all right, so we extended five minutes. Um, Dorothy, I think you spoke to your amendment, so if you want to say more, you can, but I think you spoke to why you did that. Uh, I have Giulia on my list, do you want to speak now, Giulia?
Yes. So, um, I, what I want to say about this, uh, crossing, this intersection, I very familiar with intersection because I tried a two or three time there to go to the gym or to go, you know, and to use to go sometime to, to the bank. Um, I know that is, uh, is getting, uh, easier, you know, with the co- construction of the new subdivision, the new commercial, the, you know, the blueberry. Uh, and I know that it could be a concern, the increase of traffic. However, um, I think this project is, um, is a project that it should be, uh, introduced in the capital improvement plan. Um, when you, um, establish or you want to, uh, the procedure for calming, uh, traffic calming, um, is a procedure where, uh, you know, there are some steps that you, we need to take into consideration before we move forward with this type of, um, traffic calming. Uh, I know for experience, I did it in my district and I had to follow the process. And the other thing that I, 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 I don't see in this amendment is the data. You need to have data to determine why there is a issue, you know, like I would like to see, um, you know, uh, identify the number of pedestrian, um, that use a crossing, identify when heavy traffic is speeding and any other driving condition that create hazards. Uh, I would like to identify pedestrian usage of the crosswalk and times, if there is any accident, how many accident in the past? Um, so we need to demonstrate the number of car that they are not stopping at that intersection for pedestrian. Um, so and also we need to identify the number of pedestrian, the percentage of pedestrian that considerable vulnerable, you know, so we include children, you know? Um, what, what time and which season of the year it happens, so. And this is what is missing this amendment, is the data. Um, as you mentioned, Randy, before, we need some, some amendment that you didn't approve before, you mentioned that it was lack of planning or not kind of plan. And I think it's happened the same here, we need to determine, yes, we know anecdotally that yes, there could be a potential accident, it could be a, an issue, but we need to determine the data to start with the process of the traffic calming. There is a process and I think this project, even though, you know, I don't disagree that the intersection is becoming easier and easier, but we need to run it through the capital improvement plan. Um, and to be honest, I agree with Dorothy's of this traffic light, this crossing light sometimes are more dangerous. And maybe the ideal in the future for that intersection is to have a real traffic sign, you know what I mean? Like, uh, lights, you know what I mean? Instead of this, because Seminole Highway is a very, you know, is people are, yes, speeding at that intersection and if you're gonna approach those crossing lights, maybe you can create, you can create a situation can be more dangerous than it's supposed to be, so. That one are my concern about this, I think that, um, you know, I am not gonna support this amendment because I think we need to have more data, we need to follow the process and, um, I, I wanna agree with the amendment that Alder Crowsey is, is put it on the table. Um, maybe start the process to get. Maybe start the process to gather the data. And also, I am reading the note for the city engineer that also there is no insufficient funding for doing this. So that one is my recommendation.
Anyone else want to speak to this? Gabriella, and then I have Sarah after that.
I'm on a similar page as Alder Radifata. I think that this should go through the CIP, and I'm really glad that the neighbors have, you know, brought forward their voices and said that this is an issue. And I would like to see it be put in the queue with the other traffic calming projects. And I know that Bill and his team do prioritization of projects. You know, they have that one through five listed on the CIP projects about the urgency. And so I'm curious to know how you would rate it in terms of urgency compared to the other common projects in the area? And maybe it's something we would do in 2022 even as soon. I will definitely support putting this in the CIP next year, mid-year. And yeah, I think it's just, in terms of like what we, the money we have available to work with for this budget, I think that there are other projects, well, specifically some of the staffing positions that I think do a lot of good citywide, and those are what I would prefer spend the money on. But once again, I will certainly support this come CIP process time next year.
We're at five minutes, Mayor.
All right.
Move to extend.
Second.
Second by Randy, moved by Joe, on favor of extending five minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, that is approved. And were you done speaking? I think so, weren't you?
I was, yes, perfect time.
That's what I thought. All right, I have Sarah next, and then I think Tom after that. So go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I just want to agree with Alder Radifata that I do think this intersection is dangerous, and that I agree with you, Alder Udell, that walking it by the pool and even by Blackhawk, it's a lot of traffic, it is dangerous, there's a lot of families, there's a lot of kids. I think it needs to be improved. I just want to see that data and have the support of what the best path is and understand as to how we should best tackle the issue.
All right, Tom, go ahead.
This area is in District Four, and it's adjacent to the tennis court as all their states here. It's adjacent to the tennis courts. It's adjacent to obviously the Seminole Pool. And it's just adjacent to all the walkers in the area. This obviously, as I said, is in District Four. And not only Randy, but myself, we've had many complaints about people nearly getting hit here, having trouble crossing the street. Just a real problem with people at the swimming pool. And let me help you on that one. When the swimming meet is at the swimming pool, we have large groups of people that like to run across Seminole Highway and go to get a sandwich at the sandwich shop. So that comes into play. I'm a little surprised that the two district alders in District Two, this is a lot of their traffic. There's a lot of your traffic coming out this way. Wildwood, Seminole Forest, Lacy Heights, they all like to go this way. And I think it's a little premature not to put up something to protect them. As Dorothy said, I don't really like the idea either of a light where you have to stop quick, but it comes to a different scale when it's a pedestrians. And Randy and I have heard from all sorts of neighbors in reference to this intersection. And it's not getting better, it's not getting any better with the development going on. It's going to get worse. People like to walk in that area. And with the new, the buyers, what's going on there, the location, going even to the bank. They like to go to the bank, they don't like to drive, they walk. This is District Four, where you're talking to two alders that this comes to a high level. And it's butted right up to District Two. It's right in your backyard. So I found some of those comments to be surprising.
All right, I've got Gabriella, then Julia, and then Joe. Go ahead, Gabriella.
I actually have a question for Chad, if he's still on the line. I am curious of, I've heard some of these, about these swim meets that cause some particular intense traffic in that area. Is it possible to put up some, like have a police officer there to kind of help calm the traffic? Or some sort of temporary solution that's like for this very discreet period of time when there's a lot of people crossing that intersection? Is that something that your officers are able to do for unique circumstances?
Yeah, in the past, when they've had the all-city swim meet there, they have contracted to have a police officer at that crossing.
All right, Julia, go ahead.
So what we are trying to say is that, I am trying to say is that I understand that that intersection is becoming busier, but in order to proceed with this traffic calming, there is a process. And I think the process should be going through the CIP. It happened to me in my district two, three years ago, where I need to put a speed bump, and I need to follow. There is a process, and I need the data. Because I understand that, and now, you know, that there is a concern, but we need to follow the process and the data. That's it. And I don't think that is fair dumb that you blame District Two drivers, you know, creating this traffic, okay? So, because we have access to, in our district, to go out from Richardson and Wilshire, Chapel Valley, so we have other ways to get out, so.
All right, Joe, go ahead.
Five minutes, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, we got to extend first.
Move to extend.
Second by Randy, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, we're extended. Go ahead now, Joe.
Yeah, so I won't repeat things that have been said, but I'll also add for context, I've gotten a lot of calls in my district about sort of traffic calming adjustments with Anton Drive, you know, now that there is a new polling place. I've gotten, you know, requests to put something in for that street so that people can cross the street, since it's going to be a restaurant zone. You know, and obviously, other things along that corridor are going to be more neighborhood focused, so it, you know, it will, there will be a need for people to be able to cross the street that way. Also, I've gotten a request to put speed bumps on Genoan Road because people go pretty fast up and down that, once you get past Red Arrow, start heading towards Marlboro Park. So, I mean, I hear you, and I hear these concerns, and I also hear things from the neighbors. But I would sort of reemphasize what Alder Kraus said, which is, I think even if we cannot move forward with this particular project next year, I think we do need to do something that would be able to fit within the budget of the Public Works Department to at least have some sort of markation to cross the street. And I think that would be a good first step for the residents of, not only of that neighborhood, but also of anybody else who would want to cross the street for one reason or another. And I would, you know, probably also like to partner with you, Randy, to, you know, see if for next, for the CIP for 2022, if we can, you know, put in mechanisms to analyze our different, you know, sort of busy intersections, because the population of the city is getting bigger, and there's more development, and there's going to be more need for, you know, things, like we're not a rural area anymore. So, you know, I would extend that partnership to be able to look throughout our entire city and figure out where more, you know, safety measures need to be put in, because I think it's very important. And I support Alder Kraus's amendment to your amendment.
Randy, go ahead.
Just for clarification, and I guess I could have put more detail in, but I'll add it now, since I do have the floor. Back in August, I believe it was, Seminole Forest Neighborhood Association, and it is my association, I live in Seminole Forest, they approached me, and they approached Tom. Tom was on vacation, but I met with, thinking that was just going to be the president of the association, turned out to be a good dozen or more constituents. They were concerned about this intersection. And not only were they concerned, but my own, I had my own concerns because I walk this intersection as well. I walk it with my husband, I walk it with our dog, and it is a challenge for me to get to the other side. Just to go back to Alder Radifata, I apologize that the details aren't there, but I met with Bill Balky, and I guess I should have recorded the numbers that he gave me at the time. As the new person on the council did not know that, I will certainly provide the information next time. And since it was after the CIP process, it's rather difficult to insert it into the CIP process. Then came along the $47,000 for the transportation that we're all well aware of. I thought this would be an opportunity to request money for the crossing. It was suggested because, or let me back up. It was suggested I go through the calming, traffic calming. However, Bill came back and stated that it exceeded that funding. Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So, that process was out as well. It was suggested I put it in this process. So I've gone through three processes, and I will put it in the CIP next time around if it fails. Just do keep in mind that this is a human factor issue. I've heard this word over and over and over. But just keep in mind, it is a human factor issue, and it's also, it's not just a human factor. It could be, this could be a death, this could be an injury. Thank you.
Five minutes, Mayor.
All right.
Move to extend.
Move to extend by Dorothy.
Second.
Seconded by Joe, I heard, on favor of extending five more minutes, say aye?
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, we have another five minutes. I do not have anyone on my list to speak, though. Oh, Dorothy does, okay, good.
Of course. The reminder is that in talking with Bill, he said that for no cost in the next year, he can put up some additional signage to make sure, make it more obvious to drivers that there is a crosswalk, as well as doing some more painting. He said he, they only use green paint for paths, I don't know. I consider green paint to mean pedestrian. So I suggested green paint, and he says, no, we only use those for path crossings. I don't know. But we're talking enhancing the crossing to make it more obvious to people without having to pay the big price. And it can go in next year's CIP. I don't think that that would be a problem. I think we can make it a lot safer for this year. I think that's it for right now.
All right, anyone else? All right, don't see anyone. So first, we have to vote on the amendment to the amendment, and that is changing this to zero funding with addressing the concern with signage and painting in the current Public Works budget. Tracy, go ahead.
Alder Radifata?
Yes.
Alder Clutter?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Kraus?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassmann?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
No.
Sixty-two, motion carried.
All right, so now we have an amended motion, which is to address the crossing with zero tax dollars, so there's not a light anymore, but it is with some signage and painting. Any further discussion? I don't think there is for those that have an option to speak. So you can go ahead, Tracy, and do a roll call on this.
Alder Radifata?
Yes.
Alder Clutter?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Kraus?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassmann?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
All right.
One more, carry.
All right. Going on to number twenty, Tom.
Number twenty, just a brief statement. The reason I withdrew mine was due to the cost. When I saw the tax levy increase, I withdrew, I wanted to withdraw seventeen, and I'm about to withdraw twenty. Reinstate half of the removed out-of-state training and travel budget. I'll withdraw that.
Withdrawn, all right. On to twenty-one, Gabriella.
I move to approve amendment number twenty-one, reinstate LTE Horticulturist Landscape Architect 480 hours.
Okay, go on.
Seconded by Julia. Would you like to speak to this, Gabriella?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So you heard two of the Parks Commission members actually come and speak live today about the importance of this position. Pittsburgh has over 730 acres of parks and open spaces, and our urban forest is made up of more than 3,100 trees and parks, 5,000 trees along streets, and a whole bunch of wood slots as well, which also need maintenance. And, you know, maintaining that urban forest, keeping it healthy, is part of the function of the Parks and Forestry Department. It's part of the mission. During the comprehensive plan feedback, which is, yeah, which one of the Parks Committee members mentioned, you know, residents overwhelmingly say that parks and trees and the green space is what they love about Pittsburgh. Our .6 full-time, our urban forester only works .6 full-time. So she, it's a little bit over a half-time job, and she's responsible for all of the trees. And it's just not enough time, especially as we continue to grow, put in new parks. We're not investing enough in our tree maintenance. So this restores that fund. I think this coming year is especially important because we are working on a tree ordinance in the Tree Advisory Committee, which we plan to have done by the end of 2021. And Anna Healy, the forester, has a difficult time even finding time to attend our Tree Advisory Committee meetings because she just literally does not have time. So I hope that this position can free up just a little bit of her time so she can weigh in on that ordinance and we can get that done. And I hope that we will continue funding this position going into the future. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, one more thing. I did apply the number one, amendment number one. That offset will cover this entire position, and that was the reason why I proposed that.
All right, anyone else? Seeing no one else. Oh, Julia, go ahead.
Yes, I think that I want to support this amendment because as I mentioned, Gabriella, you know, our parks, we are adding parks and parks and, you know, and we have a lot of issue with trees. And I think we, you know, we need to, the city is growing, and we need to also have the structure behind that growing. And when I say that is, you know, we have, we are reaching some capacity issue with the staff, and I think we need to acknowledge that, and we need to fund those positions.
Anyone else? Dorothy, go ahead.
Gabriella took over from me being on tree advisory. I know the pain. We not only have new development, but real soon, we're going to have the Southdale neighborhood and the rest of the town of Madison that we're adding. We just went through the- we just had, went through the, um, Emerald Ash. A lot of those trees are being replaced. They're still young, they're still needing a lot of care. There's still a lot that have not been replaced. There's still a lot that are dying. Um, she really needs that help.
All right, anyone else? Seeing nothing else, then we can go to the vote, Tracy.
Alder Aratafrota?
Yes.
Alder Clutter?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Uh, no.
Sixty-two, motion carried.
All right, uh, moving along to twenty-two, Julia.
Okay. Uh, I move to add assessing administrative inter-assessment technician.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Joe, thank you. Uh, Julie, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, um, so as I mentioned in the committee of the whole, the city is growing and the total assessment increased almost fifteen percent in twenty-twenty and almost thirty percent of that is new construction. Um, and, and the, the department, uh, the assessment department, assessing department, um, in order for them to complete the city-state mandate, the department staff need to be in the field and away from the office. So the inter will help, will help them by providing back office support to property appraisal and assessment staff. This inter will perform clerical technician duty to assist full-time, uh, to be full-time appraiser, which will allow them to, uh, we, which, which will allow, uh, the appraisers to focus on their, their time on discovering, leasing and val, and valuing properties. So this is an entry-level position. And also we need to, um, to consider that when we had the town of Madison in, in one year, well, almost, you know, we need to prepare for the annexation. This department is gonna have a, a workload that's gonna increase considerably. And so they will need help. So we are asking for nine thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars. So, um, uh, Amy is here. I don't know, Amy, you want to, to add some to my, uh, statement?
Amy, go ahead if you'd like to, you don't have to.
Where is, well, I don't know, is she's here?
Yep, I'm here. Um, yeah, um, I know I talked a lot at the committee of the whole. Um, one thing, you know, I didn't really ever mention is that in two thousand and five is when they went to four employees for our department. Um, and at that point, we had seven, just over seven thousand properties in the city. Now we're at over nine thousand, ninety-three fifty-six. So the city has increased thirty-three percent in just the real estate parcels. Um, but we haven't had any increase in our staffing. Um, and, and so we're just, we're just struggling, we're trying to complete our workload.
All right, anyone else? Gabriella, go ahead. And then Joe after that.
I also, I, I said this at committee of the whole as well, but I also just want to mention that I remember when the assessments came out and there was a lot of controversy and community feedback about it. And some of the alders who suggested that we should have sent out an explainer letter. And I think that's just a sign of a, an overworked staff that doesn't have time to, to be able to, you know, do those types of details. And I think providing this intern to support the assessment staff will really make it easier for them to do their job well. Um, and it also was very cool, I mean, Amy explained last time about how this is a mentorship, um, internship. And there's an opportunity to train a young person to potentially go into assessing. We definitely need people that want to go into local governments in the future. So I think that's also a really cool element of this, of this internship as well. And, uh, and so I, I, I support this project.
All right, Joe, go ahead.
Allow me to pontificate because this is my passion. Um, I will say out of all the amendments, apart from the ones I presented, um, this is one of my favorite. Um, I think it serves multiple roles. Um, one, it, it, um, you know, obviously lightens Amy's load a little bit, which I fully support after getting to know her and sort of know the struggles that she's been through this year. Um, but two, I think it, it develops youth. Um, and, and I think that is critical. Um, everything I've said earlier about the teen center, about the hub in the past, um, applies to this. I, I've, uh, in my past professional experience, um, I've managed, um, high school and college interns um, and connected them with companies, um, through the Boys and Girls Club. And I've also, um, you know, worked at Extension, um, where I'm, I manage, um, the community and youth development, uh, space statewide. So I know that it's critical that young people are connected to career pathways and diverse sets of career pathways, including, um, those that don't require higher education. So, um, I, you know, I fully support this, I will vote enthusiastically for it. Um, I, I think the city needs not only the relief off of Amy's back, but it also needs, um, opportunities to be able to plug our youth in. The only thing I would say, um, is I know that you work through our three school districts, but I would also, um, say that, um, you know, many of our nonprofit partners, um, you know, in our community can also be good pipelines for a potential, um, intern. And, um, that you, you know, consider working with, um, our local organizations, including, especially the ones that operate in Fitchburg, including Dear Diary, um, Boys and Girls Club, um, and, uh, you know, other, other organizations as well. And I'd be glad to, um, help spread the word. I think it would also contribute to, um, our HR director's, um, equity goals that, that she's, um, shared with us in the past as well. So, um, down to helping any way I can.
All right, um, we're at five minutes. If someone else wants to, okay, we need to extend five minutes then, so Dorothy can speak.
Move to extend first?
Second.
Standing by Joe, on favor of extending five minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, you may want to extend the, uh, meeting too?
Uh, yep. So anyone that does not want to extend it five minutes, say no. All right. And while we're in the process of extending meetings, if someone wants to make motion to extend the council meeting another hour, that'd be great.
Meeting got one hour.
All right, same by Gabriella. All right, for, moved by, and seconded by Dorothy, sorry. Moved by Gabriella, seconded by Dorothy. On favor of extending the meeting another hour, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, so that is also extended. All right, now Dorothy, go ahead.
Okay, at the end, I'm going to have an Amy question. Um, first off, I wanted to say though, that I believe this is our largest revenue generating department in the city. Um, but even with that, to work on balancing the value of various properties is incredibly important. Um, that, that's probably the hardest part of the job, I would think. Um, to do it right, you need to, um, get a close-up look at many places, which leads me to the question. Um, you mentioned nine thousand something in your count. Um, I wanted to find out whether that includes apartments and whether each building in an apartment complex is one of the counts or is the parcel that contains all the buildings one property that you're talking about? Um, in any case, I'm going to presume that evaluating apartment buildings are far more complex than single-family homes. So if you could address apartments for me, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, um, apartments, it, it kind of depends. An apartment building might have four big apartment buildings on one parcel. So that count is just the parcel itself. It's just that one boundary, legal boundary. And then it might have two hundred apartments on that one parcel. Um, whereas a condo might appear like it's one parcel or one building, but it might have thirty-six units in it. So that might be thirty-six parcels and one exterior physical boundary, I guess I would describe it as. Um, and then we have all those storage units and the parking. So we have certain condos that have additional parcel counts. That is like an actual parking stall is a parcel. Um, a storage unit might be a parcel in certain condo complexes. Other condo complexes do not have that. So it, it really varies throughout the entire city. Um, and then ag land, you might have one forty-acre parcel, but you might have four different land records based on if it's agricultural, forest, or the site where the buildings are, um, or your swamp or waste. So you could have various different categories. So when we look at things, we don't just look at one, you know? It's more complicated than you think, I guess you'd say. Um, and so we have to dig into everything. You know, with the new comp plan, we actually have to look at all of those changes too. Um, so that'll be part of what we're looking at this year. Um, every time we have a zoning change, then that affects the values. So we're affected by whatever economic development does, whatever building inspection pulls for permits, whatever planning does for zoning changes. Um, you know, engineering with new roads, streets, Fishhatry Road, all of that, where they, um, took pieces of the, the properties as part of that road right away. Well, that, we have to change every one of those parcels now, based on the square footage that they've removed from that actual parcel and became road right away. So there's lots of actions that we, we do every year that I don't think people think about that we're changing and altering each year too.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this one? Seeing no one else. Tracy, go ahead with the vote.
Alder Aratafrota?
Yes.
Alder Clutter?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Uh, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. On to number twenty-three, Gabriella.
Thank you. I move to approve amendment number twenty-three, establish community well-being fund.
Second.
Standing by Sarah. All right, uh, you want to speak to this, Gabriella?
I would love to, thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, so this is a concept, um, that, it actually is inspired by a couple of things. Misty's replacement funds or the finance department's replacement funds, where they invest in things upfront so that they can pay for it easier later, um, through good planning. And then also the, uh, the hotel tax that we collect. Um, part of that is taken by the city, but it's put into the Economic Development Fund so that we can use that as we see fit. So the idea is creating a, uh, we create a community well-being fund in a similar way where we, uh, create a fund that the projects that are using that money won't be paid for in the year that the money goes in. So that, it's like a pool of money that's used for the future. So, um, and the idea is that we fund it through the fines and forfeitures revenue stream. And for those that are watching that might not know what that is, that's, you know, parking tickets, court fines, all those sorts of things come into the city and is used, um, as part of our general fund to pay for what we want. So the idea is to divert a portion of that revenue fund, uh, revenue stream into the community well-being fund, um, which will then, that money will stay there in, at least until the end of the year and maybe longer, depending on what we want to do with those projects. So because, uh, our revenue stream is actually, uh, projected to be quite, a lot lower this year than it is in normal years, uh, given the pandemic and given how this year has gone. Um, so the revenue stream is projected to come in at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, my, it, so my intent was to, uh, divert five percent of that, uh, into the fund to, um, to start the community well-being fund. But given the fact that, based on my calculations, we're getting pretty close to that cap, I actually think that I'd like to make a motion to amend this amendment, uh, to bring that down to, hang on, I'm sorry. Hold for just a second. Um, I guess three point five percent instead of the five percent, which by my, it should be around fifty-two hundred fifty dollars instead of the seventy-five hundred.
So if I'm hearing right, you're moving to amend your amendment to three and a half percent instead of five percent?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Hey, go on.
Standing by Julia. All right, uh, any further discussion? All right, don't see anything. So first then, we would vote on changing the percent to three and a half instead of five percent. Uh, Tracy, go ahead.
Alder Aratafrota?
Yes.
Alder Clutter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado? Alder Schroder?
Ask, yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. On to number twenty-four, Randy.
Oh, we have to do, uh,
Oh, sorry, the main motion, sorry, sorry, I'm half asleep, sorry. All right, now on to the main motion, unless someone has any other comment, I don't think they probably do. Go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Aratafrota?
Yes.
Alder Clutter?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
Gabriella, you ready?
Gabriella? Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Now we can go to yours, Randy.
Okay. Amendment number twenty-four, motion to move reinstate cable service at fire stations and City Hall Senior Center.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Standing by Sarah, got in there first. Uh, would you like to speak to this, Randy?
Uh, yes. Uh, the, uh, the amendment proposes to restore the cable service to three fire stations and City Hall, including the Senior Center. The fire station is a firefighter's home for a good portion of the week. Since the job is physically, mentally, and, and challenging, when there is downtime, a firefighter deserves a few small comforts of home. Uh, the Senior Center fulfills many of the social, physical, emotional, and intellectual needs of Fitchburg's senior population. Cable service is an intricate part of the Senior Center programming. Uh, the Senior Center cable service provides national news, local news, fact-TV streams, continuously enhancing the quality of life for many Fitchburg seniors.
All right, anyone else?
Yes.
Julia, go ahead.
Yes, um, I want to support this amendment, but in the future, I will recommend the mayor not to take the cable out of the budget because for me, the cable is like a, another utility. It's like the water, the telephone, you know? So this is our important services to our department. And I would like to, you know, I haven't seen that in my sixth year in this council budget. So I will ask, recommend that please, in the future, we shouldn't go to these, you know, services.
All right.
That's all.
Anyone else? Dorothy, go ahead.
Uh, um, question for Joe. I'd like an update on his thoughts on, um, whether the guys at the fire department want or need cable. Or when, when we met last, he was talking a lot about, um, them watching streaming services and such things. Um, what I'm contemplating is removing the fire departments and leaving just the City Hall expenses in here. Um, but I wanted to get Joe's thoughts on that first.
All remarker.
Yes. At present, we have no streaming services. Anything that would be brought in streaming would be brought in. Anything that would be brought in streaming would be brought in by the uh, private use of our firefighters. The the issue that I that I have with that is that's um, a little bit more difficult to control. I can uh, I can control uh, certain activity that happens in the fire station, especially. As it pertains to the type of programming that is watched. When streaming devices are brought in, the the municipality loses a little bit of control about that. And it makes a little bit dip more difficult to enforce uh, from an ethics standpoint. And not that anybody brings in anything that they aren't supposed to watch, at least at present. I'm also trying to consider those things that I may have to enforce in the future uh, with employees that we have not yet employed. So that's one e- reason to uh, to to keep the uh, the cable service. Uh, the other one is is obviously uh, cable service supports fact TV. Um, and keeps them on the air. And um, I know it o- only minimally offsets it. But if the rest of our community did something similar, it would greatly impact what uh. We uh, we we benefit from with uh, those that that work with fact.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing nothing else. All in, oh, I'm sorry. Tracy, go ahead. Oh, sorry. Gabriella, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanna say I also support this amendment. I actually um, I actually kinda glad that I got a chance to hear about why it's important. Um, I think it's more intuitive why it's important to the firefighters, given how much time they spent in the station. Um, but I al- I was interested to hear about the senior center and how important it is to the culture at that center. Uh, I didn't realize that. And it was nice to learn that uh, and see those photos of of seniors even during the pandemic enjoying it. Um, even if it's just a few people. And you know, I'm a big believer in um, supporting the community. And I think it's great that we. Really fund our senior center well. And so I'm happy that we can make this a part of it. I'm, I guess I'll, no, that's all. Thank you.
All right, Joe, go ahead.
All right, chief, when um, when COVID's over, we're watch binge-watching at least one season of Chappelle's Show.
All right. Anything else? Seeing none. Tracy, you can go ahead with the roll call.
Alder Aratafara?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Excellent. Uh, number twenty-five, Julia.
Okay, so um, I move to add LTE election assistance two hundred hours.
Second.
Saying about Gabriella. Uh, do you want to speak to this, Julia?
Yeah, so um, you know, as I mentioned in the committee of the whole, I see this one, you know, um, we can see that our clerk department is um. You know, um, is in need of more assistance, especially now that people are changing the way they are voting. With more absentee ballot, with the town of Madison annexation. You know, um, and this staggering uh, terms, you know, we are gonna have election every single year. Um, for council. So um, so we're asking for two hundred hours. For the amount of two thousand eight hundred eighty-four. So I think. This one is gonna be, this is another department that is, you know, capacity is uh, reaching limit. Um, the way we are voting is different, it's changing. Um, and so I think that one uh, is gonna bring some relief for them and help.
All right. Anyone else? Uh, Gabriella, go ahead.
You know, I think we just uh, heard at the beginning of this meeting, which feels like a long time ago, but uh, how amazing uh, Tracy's. Team did uh, with this election, given extraordinary circumstances and. The pandemic's gonna continue. We have an election in April. Um, those absentee ballots are are gonna keep, keep being requested. So. Uh, I really support, I support this to make sure that the staff is able to 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 make elections happen. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Tracy, you can go ahead and do a roll call.
Alder Aratafara?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Yes.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carried. And thank you.
All right. Uh, next up, uh, Julia again.
Okay, um, I am no mute, okay. Um, this is to move um, and to restate mayor and council training and travel. But we don't travel, but.
All right. I heard that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Saying it by Sarah. Uh, do you want to speak to this, Julia?
Yeah, so that one is um, I, you know, as as you know, we are gonna have. Possible four new alders every year from now on, and they really need to have some training. Especially the training for the Wisconsin League of Municipalities Aggregates Training. And also. We we uh, we attend some conferences and webinars like a WIDA, like a diversity summit. And others, and other uh, trainings that I used, I remember. I went to a training done by the city of Middleton about planning and the comprehensive plan, you know, so. And you know, since our salary are so, you know, little. Uh, and you know, and I think it's something else that the city can do for us is to pay. It's only one thousand five hundred dollar for nine people, you know? So, and according to the, my calculation that I am doing, following the amendment, I see we have the capacity. To fund this, um, the numbers, you know, we are under lim- and the and the le- and the eh. Levy limit, so um, I will uh, you know, I will um, ask my fellow alder to. To approve this.
Anyone else? Joe, go ahead.
Um, Alder, what's your, what's your intention in case, you know, who knows what way the election's gonna shake out, but say all four alders. Uh, that are up for reelection continue. Um, are are you looking to use this for other sorts of trainings other than sort of the. New League of Municipality trainings? Or do you, or you, would you intend it to like carry over into a future year?
You're asking to me?
Well.
Yeah.
Hold on, Julia. If you speak, this is your second turn. You only get two turns to speak. Okay.
Uh, Joe, there are plenty of training there for us. So sometime we don't know. You know, we can go to a, even go into a networking event, you know, representing the city. We need to pay for the ticket. It's. Usually it's eight, eighty, a hundred dollar, you know, so there are multiple, eh, not only training, but also representing the city and networking. You know, we can use the money to pay for those, you know, and there are plenty of training there, you know, to do.
All right. Anyone else? Tom, go ahead.
The mayor, for his own reasons, took money out of the budget in reference to employees, um, the council. And it had to do with training and some of it had to do with education. And I'm looking at the employees when I looked at the budget. I mean, the employees, as far as um. Continuing education, which I think is important to the employees, to keep our employees up to speed on whatever that may be. Um, I'd just like to add an amendment to this if I could to roughly. Increase the levy, increase there by another thousand dollars and add employees. Um, to this if I could. Is that fair? Uh.
So you're making.
Add a thousand dollars.
So you're moving to add another thousand dollars to the total?
Correct.
Okay.
My, my wording is employees as well, you know, just across the board.
So it's a thousand dollars for employees?
Right. On top of what.
Okay.
The alders already stated.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Is there a second?
Can I clarify?
Yes.
For a moment?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, so the problem is that this amendment is specifically about alders and elected officials. So it would be a separate budget than the employee training. So I don't think it's appropriate to add that to this amendment.
Okay.
Could I add it to the other amendment then? There's another amendment coming.
Uh, that one is also.
Same thing.
Council elected officials.
So I'm.
So the one that you could add it to would have been the one that you withdrew. That was about the employee training.
Yeah.
All right. We'll let it go.
All right. Anyone else? Uh, Gabriella, go ahead.
I changed my mind. No, never mind.
All right. Seeing no one else. Tracy, go ahead.
Alder Aratafara?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Uh, now twenty-seven, Gabriella.
I move to approve amendment number twenty-seven, increase tree advisory committee meetings from four to six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Julia. Would you like to speak to this?
Yes. Uh, this is, the, yes, thank you. Um, this is a temporary change. Uh, for twenty twenty-one. Um, it is specifically because the tree advisory committee is embarking on a effort to develop the tree. A tree protection ordinance, which was one of the original reasons the committee was created. Uh, and I think that more regular discussion is gonna be necessary, especially since. There's just gonna need, need to be some back and forth on this. And I think having those two extra meetings is gonna make a, make a big difference so we can meet every. Other month rather than every quarter. Uh, it, this only impacts three hundred and seventy-two dollars in the budget. I uh, and I provided enough uh, offsets through amendments one and two to cover it. Um, and. That's, that, oh, I guess I, I know there were some concerns about um, not wanting to make this continuous. So it is. Is it possible to amend the motion, the the amendment to say that. It 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 can go back down to four in twenty twenty-two? Or is that something that's not like a part of the scope of this amendment? Maybe Misty could give me some insight?
Hey, Misty, do you run away and uh, if it can, you know, just shoot from the amendment, so it's only twenty twenty-one or something like that?
Yeah, at this point, we're only working on the twenty twenty-one budget. So really, you're kinda talking about the twenty twenty-two budget. So I can make a note for myself for next year, but it's nothing that you would do at this point.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else? See no one else. Tracy, go ahead.
Alder Aratafara?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carries, six to two.
All right. And uh, number twenty-eight, Gabriella.
I will withdraw number twenty-eight.
Withdraw. All right. And how about twenty-nine?
I move to approve amendment number twenty-nine, increase resource conservation committee, RCC meetings from eight to ten.
Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Julia. And would you like to speak to this?
Yes. Uh, this is pretty simple. Uh, RCC meetings, uh, we meet eight times a year currently. They typically are two and a half to three hours long. Uh, we had a meeting last night that was three hours long. Um, but I would say that that is filled with very productive and wonderful discussion. You know, we're, the committee is charged with a wide variety of of activities just around sustainability. Refugees and recycling, stormwater. So there's a lot to discuss. I think increasing the meetings to ten would give. A lot more time for discussion and possibly even some cool. Uh, I think the committee's been gonna dream a little bit about what we could do with those two additional meetings. Perhaps we do a sustainability-focused meeting. Uh, and maybe in- include a public hearing with it. And then we do a stormwater uh, specific meeting and include a hearing with it. I think there's a lot of uh, great conversation that should be had. Uh, and as you all know, I'm I'm very passionate about um, protecting stormwater. Or not, not protecting stormwater, making sure that stormwater is managed well in the city. Uh, and we've had, having a lot of conversations about that. That has taken some additional time. Uh, so I'm excited about uh, the possibility of increasing our number of meetings. Um, for funding. Uh, this is coming from three hundred and twenty dollars out of the refuse and recycling fund balance and a hundred dollars from the levy. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Tom?
Gabriella probably knew I was gonna say this, but um, I just wanna encourage all of you to. Have shorter meetings. Three and four hour meetings are terrible. They really are. The citizens in the city want to achieve what they want to achieve. I get it. I totally get it. But they don't wanna go to a meeting for three hours and four hours. That's bad news. I've heard that so many times. People would like to be on a committee, but they go forever. And I just encourage them to talk to the chair, whoever that is, and tell them to make it shorter. You know, either they're repeating himself many times, or the people don't know what they wanna say. But three and four hour meetings are ridiculous. And I guess the old alder at the city council here is gonna tell you that. But i- it's not a good deal. Trust me. People, after they've worked eight hours a day, after they've been home with their kids, don't wanna go to a meeting for that length of time. And if you do, okay, but um, I would encourage you to be careful with this.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else. Tracy, go ahead.
Alder Aratafara?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Motion carries, five to three.
All right. So we've come to the end of the amendments for now. Misty, do you need five minutes, ten minutes? What do you think?
Uh, I can have just five minutes. That would be great. But I'll tell you. My initial number is that we do have a budget that meets levy limits. So let me double check my work and then we'll come back.
All right. So if uh, someone wants to move to recess for five minutes, maybe. Uh, Dorothy, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Um, depending under, we can still uh, reopen for consideration. Those that um, did not pass.
Uh, only if our budget does not balance. And someone.
If if we have room to reopen. Uh, one or more for further discussion is my question.
I don't understand your question.
The question is if, depending on what number, if there are amendments that we did not pass. The first time around, that would fit within that number that we might want to reconsider. Will we be able to do that? Or is it a done deal as soon as it passes levy?
It's a done deal. There's not a reconsideration if it it calculates. That's in the process. All right. Does someone wanna do a motion to recess for five minutes? Do a bio break?
So move.
Move by Joe, saying by Randy, on favor of a five-minute recess. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
And oppose nay. All right. Five minutes. And people are slowly popping back on here. All right. So what do you have to tell us?
Yeah, so let me share my screen. That's the wrong thing. Okay, let me try that again. This one. So at the end of the day, we have five hundred and thirty-one dollars left. Uh, in.
How's that number?
What was that?
I, you said my number.
Yay. It's always good when we match. So let's go through them uh, one by one, just make sure we're on the same page. Uh, so number one was approved, two was approved, three failed, four withdrawn, five failed. Uh, six, seven, eight, nine failed, ten, eleven, twelve approved. Thirteen, fourteen withdrawn, fifteen failed. Sixteen approved as amended with a forty thousand dollar contract. sixteen approved as amended with a forty thousand dollar contract, twenty-five thousand from levy, fifteen thousand from donations. Seventeen was withdrawn, eighteen failed, nineteen was approved as amended, which, uh, was a zero-dollar levy impact. Twenty was withdrawn, twenty-one and twenty-two were approved, twenty-three approved as amended at three and a half percent. And then four through, or twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven approved, twenty-eight withdrawn, and twenty-nine approved. So that means, uh, with our expenditure restraint calculation, assuming this is all correct, that, um, that omnibus amendment where I need to insert the dollar amount, uh, will be four hundred and twenty-four thousand, six, eighteen. And again, that's a strategy, basically moving it from one fund to another fund, so that we can make sure we don't lose our capacity within expenditure restraint for next year. And then property tax rates, uh, the assessed value is still unknown at this point, where hopefully soon, we'll have what that final assessed value is, so it, all these rates and such is based on an estimate at this point, it will be at least a little bit different. But our property tax levy that needs to get inserted into the resolution is twenty-four million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. That makes an assessed value tax rate of seven dollars and seventy-seven cents for just the city portion. That is a decrease in the rate of two-point-four percent. The city taxes on an average home is then twenty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars, which is an eighty-nine-dollar increase from last year. And we have that five hundred and thirty-one dollars available. And I'm very impressed that we only had to do it once.
All right, um, I did talk with my lever counsel during our break, and, uh, I was incorrect in my interpretation of our process, and it is possible, if someone wants to make a motion to reconsider amendments, uh, we can do that, but we have to make a motion to reconsider amendments, and that would have to pass, and then we can go through and reconsider amendments. So if someone does want to make a motion to reconsider amendments and go through that process, um, they can, you can leave it, yep, we're, you don't have to, but, um, if someone wants to make that motion, Dorothy?
I was just gonna say, with only five hundred bucks, um, I don't think it's worth reopening anything.
Okay. All right, I, so I don't hear anyone wanting to do that. So, um, Misty, maybe, do we vote before closing statements, or do we do closing statements and then vote?
Oh, things first, yeah.
All right. Uh, Julia, a question?
Yeah, can I ask a question from Misty, so so do you have, so are you saying that there is a decrease in our tax rate for twenty-one? Okay, so the public know that, so we, we are not increasing taxes in our portion, okay? Is that correct?
The rate is decreasing, the average home's tax bill is going up by eighty-nine dollars.
Yeah, because, yeah. Okay, so do you have a number from the, for the other municipalities, then for, you know, from the school district, no?
Nope, I only have those same two as I reported last time. So, uh, Dane County, I know, approved their budget recently, so I have ten days before I get that. And then Madison's referendum passed, so I'm sure they're working through all their paperwork at this point.
The counties.
All right. So we are now into the closing statements regarding the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Does it save what order at all? Okay, I thought I'd go first, then I'll go through the districts. I think it's great to hear that we ended up balanced. It's always a long night, and there's always some things that people want that don't make it, and hopefully, there's always a few things that you do want that get in there as well. And it's the most important thing we do, so, you know, thank you for all your hard work with this, and, uh, try and get some sleep. So I will go to District One, Dorothy.
I'm just going to wish that there were money to do what we ought to do. It's really kind of sad, year after year after year, particularly looking at Bill's stagnant picture there, um, the amount of money, I know that, um, 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 Mayor Arnold, back when, really wanted to bank money for road repairs on an annual basis. Um, I know our, our roads are really suffering and getting a lot worse, and we're ignoring those too, far more than we ought to. I'd love to be able to do more for those in the future than we've been able to the past number of years. So glad to make it through one more year.
All right, Joe?
Um, can I wait till the end?
Um, I, I, I don't know, is there anything in the process, Misty? I don't
It says closing statements if they wish, so that nobody has to do a closing statement if they don't want to.
Okay, all right. Um, uh, Julia?
Oh. Okay, so first of all, I want to say thank you to all of them, you know, to Misty for, for another budget year, um. Second, I want to thank all the new alders, because you guys brought a lot of new amendments. It's great, it's great to see that you are, you know, um, you know, you're, you're looking to, to make this city better, looking for outside the box, looking for other opportunity for the city, so I am very proud of, you know, even some of your amendment didn't pass. You know, uh, this is a learning experience, maybe it happened to all of us, you know, and don't take it personally if we vote one of your amendment down. This is a process, uh, this is a, we discussed this amendment, and this is a learning experience for you, so you will learn, and next year, you're gonna feel more, you're gonna feel stronger, more comfortable about how this process works, so I want to say, you know, you brought a lot of new ideas to this budget, and I really love it. Um, um, so, um, so the other thing that I want to mention is, you know, there was an annoyance room under the tax, the levy limit for all our amendments, uh, so we had to make some hard choices, we did it, um, so, and I hope that uh, future budgets start investing in, in other type of services for this city, investing more in capital, um, in human capital, investing, we can bring together, we can, you know, develop other type of pro- programs to assist our more vulnerable citizen in our city. Um, um, and also, um, we need to reinvest in our community. It means that we need to sometime, you know, look for, uh, project or development, that sometime they are not the normal, or they are, you know, they don't fit the box. But sometime we need to start thinking outside the box to see what other amenity, what other services we can provide in, in, for our community, um. I don't think that this budget reflect the priority that I wish this budget had. I wanna approve it. Uh, but, um, you know, um, but I wish some of the priority that I would like to see, they are here, they are not, so, but never mind, I will approve it. The other thing, finally, I want to, um, to tell the rest of the people that are watching is, um, you know, wear a mask, wear a mask, all the citizens here in Fitchburg, please do that. Uh, COVID numbers are going up, it's insane. This, this virus is out of control. Um, we can do our own, um, you know, part in this, and it's wearing a mask, staying at home, you know, all of that. And also, uh, tomorrow is, um, Memorial, uh, is Veteran Day, and I want to salute to all of the veterans in our city for the services, and also for protecting our democracy, and this is what we really need more than ever right now.
All right, Gabriella?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I do want to thank, to start off by thanking, uh, our finance director, Misty. It was a pleasure working with you with this process, and, um, appreciated being able to bounce back ideas about how to make things work, uh, and make things happen, so I really appreciate all your attention to detail, and you're fantastic. So, thank you, and thanks for all your hard work on this. I also want to thank, uh, my fellow alders and the mayor. I think we had a lot of really spirited debates here, and I think that debate and conversation is so valuable. Uh, it's, it's everything, and I, I think the, uh, our residents appreciate that we have, um, these conversations. I, I've said it multiple times, I think all of us have said it, budget is, reflects the priorities of the city. If we don't pay for it, we, we, we don't, that's not what we value. Um, and so when I was drafting these amendments, I was thinking about what I valued and what I heard that my constituents valued when I was campaigning. And so I tried to think about three main things when I was putting forward amendments. Uh, preparing for climate change, protecting the environment in our urban forest, and improving community well-being. And with this budget, we have moved forward on all of those, uh, in my mind, and so I'm very proud of it. For those of you that are, one of, some of the things that you're getting for climate change preparation, we are committing to investing in hybrid electric vehicles in the future. We are gonna have more native vegetation planted at our stormwater facilities. And for protecting the environment, we're gonna have a data monitoring station in Swan Creek that's gonna protect the obese of wetlands, um, in collaboration with all partners all over the area. Um, we're gonna have a new part-time forester that can help, um, maintain the trees and landscapes in our parks and the places that make this city beautiful. And we have a new community well-being fund that like takes an idea from, from these, uh, these replacement funds that the finance has been doing so wonderfully, but instead doing it for community well-being, which, um, I, I hope that we can grow that in the future. And we also have a community engagement study, and I know that was a hard vote for a lot of people, and, uh, but it really matters, and I am so excited to see how fast we can fundraise that donation money. Um, I can't wait to hear what Joe has to say about that, so, uh, thank you all, I'm really proud of this budget, and, uh, welcome any questions from constituents that want to learn more, uh, learn, learn more about it, thank you.
All right, Sarah?
Try my hardest to give my feedback during the budget, no additional comments.
All right, thank you, Shannon?
No comment.
All right, Tom?
I think it was a hard-fought budget. I think that, uh, we had some lot of good ideas in this budget. The number one priority for me, I guess, always is the taxpayer. They're the ones that are paying the bill. They keep the city running along with the staff. But, um, you know, they're the ones that have to step to the plate, and this hasn't been an easy year. This has been a tough, tough year. With this, um, pandemic, hours cut back, layoffs, taxes, and, um, assessments. I am impressed, though, with this budget, I think it was pretty good. I want to make it real clear why I did what I did, though. That's probably why we kept five hundred and some dollars in the budget because of me. That was a joke. All of our staff needs more help. Everyone. And you know what? For future people that'll be here, you have the town of Madison coming at you. You won't need an LTE, you won't need two hundred hours of work, you're gonna need more staff, you're gonna need more bodies. And for a lot of it, I just think that you ought to keep that in your mind and keep that in your sight. The town of Madison's coming unless something changes. So what is that, two years? Am I thinking right?
Just under.
Something like that? And that's why some of these amendments that were short-sighted, I voted against. But, um, I, I just think the town's coming at us, you really have to keep that in your sight. And I think that's the number one priority going forward. It will be the town of Madison. All these other things, you're gonna have to soak up, but the town of Madison's out front and center. But, um, as it was, um, keep your meetings short. And you know what? It wasn't a bad budget, I don't think, so that's all I got.
All right, Randy?
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, uh, thank, uh, Misty, uh, for her guidance and direction through this, first time through. Um, and I'd also like to thank Mayor Richardson for his assistance through this process, not only this evening, but throughout the past couple of weeks, whenever I had questions, he was always available. Uh, and my alders as well, uh, I appreciate the, the, uh, spirited debate. And no, I did not take it personally, it is business. And it is a good budget, it is a very good budget. Uh, I'm very pleased with it, the outcome, and I think, uh, the citizens of Fitchburg, it's in their, it's, it's, they, they have been in the equation the entire time, at least in my mind, and, um, they will, uh, I think they'll appreciate it once we, once we, the fu- the num- final numbers roll out, so, again, that's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, Joe, last chance?
Hey, um, so, um, I, I'm an optimist, I'll always be an optimist, and, uh, even, you know, when things get difficult, um, always gotta remind myself of the, um, basic goodness of human beings, so, um, you know, I'll say this, when I first begrudgingly decided to run for office, because for a longest time I didn't want to, um, I, um, had the task, as all of you probably had, of walking around my neighborhood, talking to, um, you know, knocking on doors, talking to other human beings, figuring out what their interests are, their passions are, and what they want. And, um, you know, for me, it really, um, broke down a lot of misconceptions that I had. I got to really see the complexity and, um, the, the, um, all the contradictions, but also the beauty and the value of, um, people that lived around me for years that I didn't get to know. And, um, from that, I really learned, um, the great value, um, the gems that really exist in this community, and you've heard them speak, um, you know, throughout, um, meetings throughout this year, and I'm just, I just want to say to the residents of this city, um, I really value and appreciate you, and you make me proud to live in this city. Um, it's a beautiful, vibrant city with a lot of talented, um, and, and passionate human beings, um, whether I agree with them on everything or not. Um, and I, I just want to say, stay engaged, um, this is your city. Um, you own it, it, it sometimes makes our meetings last a little bit longer. Um, but really, that's what democracy is supposed to be, and without you, um, we would make decisions in a vacuum, and we would further, um, uh, you know, the chasm of inequality. Um, to the alders, I want to thank all of you, as well as the mayor. Again, whether I agreed with you or not on things, um, whether I got, you know, what I initially set out to propose, um, you forced me to clarify my positions, um, you challenged me to rethink, um, the way that, that I'm doing things, and you, um, you know, ultimately sharpened my, my blade as I hope I sharpen yours. To young people watching, um, this, this is my passion, um, you are my passion, and, um, know that, um, you have a place, um, in these types of settings. Um, the decisions that we make affect your lives. And, um, you can always consider us, um, people that you can look up to, um, and, and figure out how to do this thing, 'cause it, it needs to be you sitting here, um, very soon, um, to help make these decisions. Um, and then I, finally, I just want to thank the staff, um, you know, I've been in your role, um, you know, through nonprofit work, where, um, you know, it's, it's sort of up to me and my colleagues to make, um, things work that board members or other volunteers, you know, were pushing and asking for. Um, so I understand the, you know, I, I understand that, that you have to work longer hours, I understand that you have to, um, you know, push a little bit harder when, um, you know, when we or when residents ask for things. Um, but I just want to say that your work is appreciated, um, and I, I continue to, um, look forward to getting to know, um, all of you better in the upcoming years. Um, and I'll just end with a quote, um, you know, because this is, sort of represents why I decided to, you know, go into this space and why I'm sure others did as well. Um, "From the equality of rights springs the identity of our highest interests. Um, you cannot subvert your neighbor's rights without striking a dangerous blow to your own," um, and that's by Carl Schors. Um, you cannot subvert your neighbor's rights without striking a dangerous blow to your own. Um, and that's by Carl Schors. And, um, I will say that I've found the generosity, um, not only of residents of Fitchburg, but people throughout this entire, um, region as, um, people who give of themselves and people who will sacrifice a little bit of themselves, um, for others around them. Because when we are all better off, when the lowest of, when the folks who have the least of us are better off, we're all better off. Um, and I hope, you know, continuing to move forward, we'll move truly in that equity space where we are truly advocating for everybody in our community to have, um, you know, the, the best of what life has to offer. So, um, thank you all. Um, and I really, you know, cherish this experience more than you know.
All right. So we need to officially vote on Resolution R 17420, adopting the 2021 annual city operating budget. All in favor of approving the 2021 annual city operating budget? Please say aye. Uh, Misty?
I think it has to be roll called.
Oh, was it? Oh, all right. Tracy, go for it.
Alder Radifrata?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Krause?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Schroeder?
Aye.
Alder Strassmann?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff. Thank you, residents. Uh, next meeting is in a couple of weeks. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Randy?
I'll move.
It's taken by Joe on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, I didn't think so. All right. We're adjourned.